Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to this morning's regular meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors on July 21st, 2025. We're going to start the meeting today with invocation by Pastor Ken Miller, and if you'd remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which should be led by Supervisor Borelli.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for watching over us. Be with the Board of Supervisors as they administrate. Support all those who work for the county. We lift up the law enforcement, the sheriff, and all that they do. We also thank you for the public health, public works in the schools we manage. Thank you for the land that you have provided. Continue to shower your blessings upon us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please face the flag of a country that's brought more prosperity to the world than mankind has ever known. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board of Supervisors, may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A, 34, and 7. Looking for a motion in action to call for an executive session to be held on August 4th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
That motion is second in my favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I swear to heaven, do have its order. Thank you. Official business to come before the board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation, claims, and demands. Attorney Davis.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Committee and/or legislative reports. Supervisor Martin. Thank you. Supervisor Borelli.
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Letman.
Nothing today.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. We'll move to, I don't believe we have a lobbyist report this morning, do we?
No, we don't.
We'll move to the county manager's report, item number four.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. No report today.
Thank you. All right. We have a few presentations this morning. The first presentation is regarding the American Lands Council. There's also an item on the later part of the agenda regarding possible membership in the American Lands Council. So the presentation today is going to be provided by Jennifer Fielder, the CEO via Teams. Madam Clerk, is she with us? Thank you.
Jennifer, are you there? I don't see her connected.
Okay, how about we move on to our second presentation, and that'll give you time to
Okay.
reach out to her. The second presentation on our agenda this morning is regarding the Adopt a Highway Program, road cleanup processes. And that presentation is by our friends at ADOT. Morning.
Morning, Supervisors. Good morning, everybody. My name's Todd Steinberger. The Assistant District Engineer for the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT. Here to present some of our statistics on Adopt a Highway and litter. Total in the Northwest District, we have 198 segments that are adopted by the public and organizations in the Mojave County area. We have 69 segments. In last fiscal year, collected 524 bags of trash. That was an approximate cost of $11,831. Also, individuals can do one-time pickups through encroachment permits. We just had one last fiscal year in the Mojave County area, collected a total of eight bags with an approximate cost of $181. Also, last year, we were lucky enough to receive state funds to have litter contracts. They only encompassed certain areas. We had two locations in the Mojave County area. One was in Lake Havasu City. That picked up $102,459 in litter. The other one is on the US 93 corridor from I-40 all the way down to technically Wickenberg. But within the Mojave County area, we collected $7,213 of litter on the US 93 corridor for a total of $172,672. Here's, kind of shows you an area. The first one there was the one-time encroachment permit litter pickup. It was from milepost 230 to 233 down there in the Mojave Valley area. The litter contract on US 93 is from milepost 92 to 144. That's from I-40 to nothing. And then the litter contract on SR 95 was in the Lake Havasu City area within the city limits. And then our staff last fiscal year picked up a total of $86,471 in litter. One thing to keep in mind, you know, we encompass all State Route 68, SR 95 in the Mojave Valley area, and from I-40 on SR 95 all the way down to the Bill Williams River, I-40 from the Mojave County line, approximately milepost 93, all the way to the California border, and then US 93 to the county, from the county line all the way to the Nevada border. That was a brief presentation. Any questions?
Supervisor Martin.
Yes, sir. One of the things that's been going on in Mojave County that I hear about is the pickup of litter or from barrels out here on Shinnerrum. What are the requirements for an individual to pick those up there? I know we have the cactus cleaners, and I think they've done a wonderful job out there. What is the issues or encumbrances that they have in picking up litter out there?
Now, if they want to physically pick up litter and have their organization adopt that TI, they could go through our Adopt a Highway program. It's included on that Adopt a Highway slide, a link to it. Also, they could do an encroachment permit, and then we could work with them to get some of those barrels back out there in a safe manner. And also, they could do a pickup through an encroachment permit through the permit staff here in our district.
Okay, so they would need to contact you, and you can assist him in getting a, what's an encroachment permit?
An encroachment permit allows an organization or an entity to access or right-of-way, to do work within the ADOT right-of-way. And yes, they can contact me, cactus cleaners can, or our encroachment permit staff through the district.
Okay, so, but if they get, go through this permitting staff, then they can empty those barrels out there, pick that trash up, and get rid of it?
Yes, they can do that. Also, too, I mean, I highly recommend, I mean, they'd have to actually do a physical pickup once a year, but they could adopt that TI. And once they do one pickup, you know, we would do an Adopt a Highway sign for them. You know, that's just something that they could keep in mind, to get their organizational name out there, and the good community service that they're willing to provide.
Okay, yeah, because what they're doing out there and all over the county is outstanding, in my opinion. I can't imagine how much money they saved the taxpayers by guys like Mark and Wayne and those guys picking up trash out there. So I think we ought to do everything we can to help them and do the job that they're doing for nothing. So, but we appreciate your presentation today and letting us know about that encroachment permit. I'd never heard of it, so I think we got a good thing going there. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions from the board? Todd, thank you for being with us today. Madam Clerk, I'd ask that that presentation be forwarded to all the board members, so they can push that out to their constituents. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind the board that the county has its own Adopt a Highway program also, so that can be done, too. But thank you, Todd.
Is that, in any way, they work with HERS at all? Madam, or Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, it's in coordination with HERS, but individuals or organization can adopt a segment of a county highway through Public Works, and the pickup would be coordinated with HERS.
And citizens that are interested in that, as Supervisor Gould raised that, how would they contact? Is there a link as ADOT has, or is there a contact number?
Public Works.
Public Works, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. We'll try again with Jennifer Fielder with American Lands Council. Madam Clerk, is she on?
She is still not. If we can go one more, we'll see if we can grab her here.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the presentation regarding Golden Valley Water Service Connections, allocations overview by Mr. Steve Lotosky, Director of Public Works. Director Lotosky, thank you.
Good morning. Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, this is a presentation on the history and overview of the GVID Water Service Connections, or otherwise known as Water Allocations. The focus of this, with the allocations, is an allocation being a property owner's right to connect physically for a water service connection to the Golden Valley Improvement District. So in essence, property owners having a share of the district's ADWR designation of adequate water supply. I'd like to start in 1990, when the original assessments were filed for the two production wells, as well as the two storage tank sites, Tank Site AMB. The district established 4,989 water allocations. We refer to these as assigned allocations. And in 1990, when the original assessments were filed, the district ensured that every single property in the GVID district had at least one water allocation. You see here is an excerpt from those assessment documents. This is how the assignment of water allocations were distributed. Parcels from 0 to 19 acres only received one water allocation. But each parcel had an allocation in 1990, when the district assessments were filed. Now, introducing the unassigned allocation. When ADWR established an adequate water supply of 1,400 acre-feet per year in 1991, coincident with the district coming online with its water system, that 1,400 acre-feet equated to 6,200 water allocations. This on the premise that each allocation provides for 200 gallons per day of water, which is common for residential dwelling units. So taking the original assigned allocations of 4,989, that left 1,211 unassigned allocations. These were allocations that were available for the district to sell to persons who wished to acquire additional water allocation. Today, about 402 unassigned water allocations remain available. Over the course of time, there's many, many years now, you know, there have been allocations sold to individual property owners for small subdivisions, for RV parks, et cetera. So we're at 402 water allocations. In 2006, there was an emergence. There was an emergence of the dry lot, that being real property parcels without a water allocation. Now, how did that happen? It was attributed to parcel splits. It was attributed to parcel splits where, and I'll just use an example. Let's say a property, a 10-acre property was in an AR-10 zone, 10-acre minimum. That parcel owner split that property into two parcels, two five-acre parcels. But as you recall from my original slide, the master parcel, the 10-acre parcel, only had one assigned water allocation. So by creating two, you created a dry lot. The Board of Supervisors became concerned about this. So there was actually a plethora of this lot splitting going on in Golden Valley in the early 2000s. And the board took a position by which unassigned water allocations from 2006 on forward would only be assigned, or sold, I should say, the district could only sell them to parcels that were properly zoned. So when I use that example of the five-acre parcel in an AR-10 zone, it was not properly zoned. And from 2006 onward, on to 2018, the district was not selling water allocations to those parcels that were not properly zoned. In fact, staff took an extra step in actually recording, making a recordation of which of the two parcels would receive the assigned allocation. Typically, it was just the A parcel. And the B parcel would be acknowledged as not having a water allocation. I do emphasize, the board in 2018 rescinded this practice, so now unassigned water allocations are now available for sale by anybody who wishes a purchase. Let's talk about pricing for a sec. And I'm bringing up again on the top image from the historical assessments. It broke down, the actual assessment to district property owners was $182 and change for the two wells that were drilled, as well as $292 for the storage tanks, Storage Tanks AMB. So in 1991, the board, through its policies and procedures for the district, assigned $474.72 as being the cost for each unassigned allocation that was available for sale. So I'm speaking to the 1,211 unassigned allocations. And that is simply the sum of the unit assessments for the wells and for the storage tank. In 2006, the board, becoming aware of the time cost of money, assigned a 9.3% simple interest to each allocation sale. And they took it all the way back to 1991. So in today's dollars, I'm just going to use round numbers. Under that pricing mechanism, each unassigned water allocation would cost about $2,000. In 2018, consistent with the board's withdrawal of that restriction on unassigned water allocation sales, the dry lots, they lifted that. We reestablished the water allocation fee at $5,200 per year with a $150 per year escalator. I'll get to, in the next slide, really, the purpose of assigning and aligning this unassigned water allocation fee to this level. And that is, this is my last slide. Currently, the district has about 1,675 meter customers. Actually, maybe more like 1,695 at this point. And it has 6,200 total allocations. So when I speak of the meter customers, those are the ones that are physically connected to the system. And as we stand right now, and as we are drilling a new water well, a replacement well for well number four, there is adequate physical production right now through our wells and storage tanks to serve our 1,600, almost 1,700 meter customer. But what happens when all 6,200 property owners with water allocations connect to the system, physically connect to the system? Well, we recognize that there may be, and anticipate, there may be a need for additional water well infrastructure, as well as storage infrastructure. And that really goes along with the pricing of today's unassigned water allocation. It stands at $6,250 for water allocation, with about 402 left over. That's about, again, round numbers, about $2.5 million. And the cost of developing our current well number two replacement is, you know, around that figure. In fact, it's about $2.8 million. So what we did put in for our well number two replacement, our design contract, is that after this well is constructed, tested, and validated at a certain production capacity, our consultant will go back and perform a comprehensive water system modeling and determine and be able to kind of guide us in terms of what future infrastructure is necessary to accommodate all 6,200 allocations that are out there, provided that those allocations actually physically connect to this. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director. Questions for Director Lotosky? Supervisor Martin.
Yeah, what I'm really concerned with is the cost. The $5,200, then there's more costs added to another 1,500 or so dollars. Does that not, in effect, stymie any kind of growth out there? I mean, that's a lot. If somebody bought a lot, and then they wanted to get water, you know, they're looking at $6,000, $7,000 just to hook up to water. So, and if I understood your presentation, this is because you want to pass on the cost of producing or having a well out there, actually produce that. Is that correct?
That is correct, whether it be a well or storage infrastructure. That is correct.
Now, we have a project that's proposed out there with Angle Homes, and I don't know off the top of my head how many homes he's talking about. But if he was approved, would he have to pay that $6,000 per household that hooks up to that?
This is both a developer, as well as a possible board consideration. If I can just go back real quick. You see here in my graphic, the original designation of adequate water supply is 1,400 acre-feet. There is a designation that the district holds right now for 950 acre-feet. There is no translation of allocations in that 950 acre-feet. So the developer has two options. One, the developer can approach the district and just purchase the remaining, or partial remaining, 402 water allocations. Or otherwise, if the developer deems it necessary to acquire even more, perhaps they're building more than 400 units, then the developer can approach the Board of Directors for potentially an allocation at excess water supply, with the premise that developer would have to take on the cost of any and all associated production, physical production.
So he gets no break. Developer gets no break on these water allocations more than any other citizen out there. He's going to have to pay that over $6,000 per connection.
That is correct, Supervisor.
Okay. I think there was some question about these allocations. I know I've got a bunch of calls on it. And I asked Director Lotosky to do this in the hopes that people understand why those allocations cost so much. Because if you look at them just from a common sense, I mean, if you went to build a house, and they're going to hit you for $6,000 right off the bat, it really adds a burden to the guy who wants to build a house out there. And I just wanted the public, and, well, for me, to understand why that is so high at this point. But, I mean, I, you know, if you want it, you're going to have to pay for it, and I just think it's, I don't know what you could do about it. But man, $6,000 to hook up to a water meter, that just, to me, just sounds so out of whack. But it is what it is. And I thank you for doing that presentation. It was very enlightening. And I hope those that aren't here, but maybe are watching and have questions about GVID and about why those allocations are what they are, they, you know, they watched your presentation, and I think you explained it. So I appreciate you doing that for us.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions for Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board for comparison, private water wells are about $35,000 to $50,000 right now to drill the well, plus the equipment. So that gives you a little perspective. Thank you.
Are you taking enough to maintain the system? I mean, because that's a cost that is also shared.
Yes, Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, we have aligned our water rates to accommodate the full operation maintenance assistance.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you again.
We'll go back, and we'll ask Madam Clerk. We have Ms. Fielder.
Yes, we have Ms. Fielder on the line now.
Great, welcome. Ms. Fielder, are you with us?
Thank you. I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Do we have a presentation, a PowerPoint, or anything that we can pull up?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us this morning.
My pleasure. Thank you for inviting me. Good morning, and greetings from beautiful Northwest Montana. I appreciate the invitation to be with you today. You should be able to see my first slide up now.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Very good. All right. Well, I am Jennifer Fielder. I'm a former Montana State Senator, and I'm also a current Public Service Commissioner, and we deal with regulating utilities and price setting regarding a development of utilities. So the issue you just tackled is a big and important issue. I hope that you're able to work that out to the benefit of your citizens. It's not always easy. But today, I'm here representing the American Lands Council. And American Lands Council is a nationwide network of local governments, elected officials, movement leaders, resource experts, and public land users, and others who desire better access, health, and productivity on federal lands. And there is a better path than what we're dealing with right now. And I want to talk to you about that today and encourage you to be part of it. But before I get going too far, I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors, do you know what this image is here? Does anyone have a guess? Well, I'll go ahead and answer it for you. This is the state of Arizona as it exists today. And this black boundary represents the state of Arizona as it was promised to you when you joined the Union of States in 1912. There's a very big difference between what was promised to you in terms of your state and your jurisdiction over that state and what you actually have jurisdiction over today, which is only the green areas. But you're not alone. Most of the West is facing the same issue. This map represents all of the United States, and it shows the great disparity of the Western states. The red areas are federally controlled lands within our states. And as you can see, in the Western states, over half of all of the land is still controlled by the federal government, has not yet been relinquished to the states, as was promised to us when we became states. And unfortunately, that, all of that red area is under the control of what we call the Black Hole of bureaucracy, thousands of miles away in Washington, DC. And this is not constitutional, and it's not working. It's a very big problem. And here's a specific example. This is a forest in Montana, not too far from our state capital. And you can see a property line is there, divides the land, divides the forest. On the left side, this is federally controlled territory, and on the right side, it's locally controlled. The left side, you can see the forest is dead, diseased, and dying. It's a very high fire risk, and it's a liability economically, environmentally, and socially. Whereas the locally controlled side is actually under state jurisdiction, and it's an actively managed, healthy, working forest. It's a lower fire risk, and it's an asset to our state and to our nation economically, environmentally, and socially. This chart shows the relative number of acres burned in the 11 Western states over about a 100-year period. And I would like to point out that from the 1940s up until the 1980s, when logging and grazing were prevalent on federal lands, that is when we saw relatively few acres burned. But once these new federal protections started to be But once these new federal protections started to be put into place in the 1970s and the 1980s, since that time, we've seen the average acres burned increase exponentially. And a great, a great deal of that is due to actually what's called intentional mismanagement. I got involved in this effort back in about 2012, when our Forest Service was working on a new plan for the Cooney and Idaho Panhandle National Forest. And this would be the 20-year plan of how they were going to manage our forest. And the Forest Service presented several, what they called alternatives or options to the community in terms of how they were going to manage our forest over the next 20 years. And the one that they selected said this, "The selected alternative will limit our ability as resource managers to respond to fire, wind throw, insects and disease and to provide timber or other commodities." And I had to ask myself, then what is the Forest Service doing if they're not doing these things and they're generating a plan that prohibits them from doing the very thing that the agency was created to do? And I got involved. It's one of the things that stirred me to actually run for the legislature back in 2012. This is actually a presentation that was given to the Public Service Commission, which I now serve on. This was given prior to my service there back in 2013, but I was alerted by a commissioner, one of the Public Service Commissioners about this because he knew I was engaged and involved in trying to affect better federal land management. And this report that was provided by the United States Department of Agriculture was titled Forest Health and Western Utilities. But look at the photograph they chose for the cover of their report. And they were alerting the state commission that 10,000 miles of major electrical transmission lines are at risk on the national forests throughout the Western United States. Nearly 1,000 of those miles were in Montana, but this report affected the, reported on the danger to the entire Western United States. And these aren't just power lines, these are major transmission lines. And the reason that they were at risk was because the vegetation was not being managed, the fire risk was not being properly reduced. This is another example of something very disturbing that we've learned lately. This comes from WildfirePros.com. These are professional wildfire managers. And this, this example shows the past fire from 2022 in Cooney Prairie in the Gia National Forest, which started as a lightning strike. You can see the area, I have the red ellipse around. It was a typical elliptical fire, wind-driven, southwest winds. Fire Pros was monitoring this fire. But then they noticed something very unusual. They noticed although fire managers initially predicted the fire perimeter to end up at 75,000 acres or less, they drew that purple line for their fire planning area of a fire planning area of nearly 400,000 acres. And not only did they plan for the fire to reach 400,000 acres, they intentionally went in and lit the rest of that 400,000 acres and destroyed all kinds of habitat, commodities. I understand that there was infrastructure that was also destroyed in this process. Devastation that didn't need to happen. And I'd like to point out that when these fires are allowed to burn or even encouraged to burn, that animals are being burned alive, literally millions of animals are being burned alive in intentional wildfires every single year in the United States. Federal protection really, the last several decades have, has been more about blocking our access to the landscape and leaving us with devastated landscapes because of the lack of care and proper maintenance and miles of fires, some of it intentional, some of it accidental, but nonetheless, we're not staying on top of these things like we're able to. And those fires are producing toxic air for all of us that travels hundreds of miles. They're giving us polluted water that clogs up our mountain streams and ends up in our irrigation works way well downstream in the valleys. And senseless loss of life and property. These effects are leaving our communities economically devastated and very unsafe. But our goal at American Lands Council is healthy air, water and wildlife and abundant outdoor recreation and safe vibrant communities. And we have a plan to get there. Transfer is the answer. Transferring federally controlled public lands to states is the only solution big enough because as Canada learned, when they went through this devolution process from of Crown lands to the provinces and the territories, they found that you tend to get better decisions when they're made by people closest to the subject matter. Canada's already done this. Has it been done before in the United States? Yes, it has, absolutely. In fact, Western states currently own and manage about 40 million acres of state trust lands and we do it responsibly. Can states afford to keep these lands public once they're transferred to the states? Absolutely. This diagram shows the amount of revenue that's created from public land management by different entities. And this study was done back about 10 years ago, so it's, the data's a little bit stale. But yet, what we saw was the US government, for every dollar it spent, it was generating about 73 cents back in revenue. So in other words, it was losing 27 cents on the dollar. Whereas Idaho was producing $2.80 for every dollar they spent on public land management. Montana was raising $8.65 and Arizona was doing really well at almost $14 return on investment for every dollar they spent on public land management. So Western states are literally outperforming the feds economically by an average of 10 to 1 or better. We have three approaches to the solution. The first one is preparation. We are working with the state of Utah and counties all across the United States who want to develop resource plans so that they can have a stronger voice at the table with the federal government now and also prepare for working with their state after land is transferred from the federal government to the state. And for more information on that, we've got the link here and we can certainly connect you if you haven't already taken advantage of this resource. But one of our big emphases is also legislation and we've developed a, what we call the National State Lands Act. And we've prepared it for introduction, although we have not introduced it yet. There's some timing issues that need to be addressed and also finances that need to be raised in order for us to support this legislation appropriately. But what the proposed bill will do is number one, it will allow states to acquire land at their own pace. So it's not like we're asking for the federal government to just all of a sudden dump all this federal land onto the states and not allow them to prepare adequately. So allow states through their legislative process to identify which areas they want and when they want them and have a federal mechanism in place that will allow the states to acquire those areas of land at their own pace. Number two is to make sure that all mineral grazing and water rights are protected when those lands are transferred so that those who hold rights to the lands on federal lands will actually maintain those rights when they become state lands. Number three, we are working very hard to ensure that the legislation will require the state to actually coordinate with the local counties per their local county resource management plans. And then number four, promises to keep it public must be kept. So we've built this into the legislation so that if the state says the land will be public, then the state will be required to keep it public. And really what we end up with is a win-win because the resource revenues from proper public land management and enhancement can provide for all the other services that are necessary or at least help provide for those services that the state and local government needs. And finally, the biggest, the biggest area that we are working on currently is litigation and we appreciate Mojave County's support of our litigation efforts last fall when Utah filed a case called Utah versus United States in the Federal Supreme Court. It's based on the premises that states were, are created equal, they are supposed to be equal. There's a tremendous amount of background on this, but I'll just give you this one quote. This is from the United States Constitution annotated in 1938, which broke down the federal cases, Supreme Court decisions on whether states had the right to these lands. And at that time, the court said, "The right of every new state to exercise all the powers of government which belong to and may be exercised by the original states must remain unquestioned, except so far as they are temporarily deprived of control over the public lands." There was a process put in place where the federal government was required to dispose of the land or transfer it, not necessarily only to the states, but to anybody that they saw fit. The Constitution provides Congress that power. But they stopped doing it with the FLIPMA, the Federal Land Policy Management Act in the 1980s. So this, this case has been built for several years with Utah and we've been working with key folks there in the, in the state of Utah and their government. And they brought the case back in October. American Lands Council filed an amicus brief in support of that and we worked on attracting other states to join Utah. And in total, 13 states were involved in the case. And American Lands Council with 27 other partnering organizations also filed a brief in support of Utah's case. The court declined to hear the case as a matter of original jurisdiction. They did not say anything about the merits of the case. They simply basically said it needs to go down to the federal court. If Utah wants to bring it, they need to bring it at a lower level. So we've been working on that. We've also been working on material to win the suit and we've come up with, with our partner, sister organization, the American Lands Council Foundation, a six-part series. We sent a copy of that to you, Chairman Langenfelter. I hope you received it okay. It should have arrived last Friday. But it's a beautiful series and it really explains the fundamental underlying principles, laws, facts and evidence in support of what we're saying and what we probably all know that the federal government really doesn't have any business controlling all these lands inside our states. So again, this is a six-part series. It's available on our website now if you'd like to access a digital copy. And we do have a limited number of print editions available. These are copyrighted materials and should not be scanned and published in the public record. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we strongly encourage Mojave County to join, to rejoin American Lands Council as a member. We are a membership-driven organization and those memberships from county governments are the primary means in which we're able to do the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Fielder, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for working with me on fairly short notice to get on our board agenda today to present this information. And after the presentation, I am going to move up before we get into consent. We do have an item, it's item 61 regarding Mojave County's possible membership in the American Land Council. Do you, can you tell us what the, what the membership amount is, what the monetary amount is, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to. We have a tiered membership structure. And so with government membership, it begins at $1,000 a year. Some of the smaller populated counties are coming in at $1,000 a year. The silver membership is $5,000 a year for the counties that are a little bit more populated and able to do that. Gold membership is $15,000 a year. And platinum membership for government organizations such as counties is $25,000 a year. It is at the discretion of the county at which level that you would like to join. It really depends on the resources that you have available and how much you want to help this happen. I will say that we are 99% volunteer-driven, so every dollar that does come into the organization is actually going to the, directly to the cause that I presented to you today.
I appreciate that. And I've been familiar with your work. I mean, you've presented to our Public Lands Commission earlier last year. You guys are doing great work. I've been looking for an alternative to NACO. NACO just seems to get more and more woke as time goes on and just an alternative organization to join. So with that, I'd open it up to the supervisors for questions. Supervisor Barelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ma'am, can you put that slide up, the map of Arizona again?
Yes, I can. I'll have to go backwards here. I'll give you the presentation in reverse real quick. Is this the one you'd like?
I really don't like it, but I've got a question. On tribal lands, are the tribes exempt from the restrictions as everybody else on managing their forests?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Supervisor. The relationship of the tribal governments to the United States is very unique and does not include state jurisdiction. And so these lands that you see here that are in green are only the lands under state jurisdiction, so that does not include tribal lands?
Mr. Chair, ma'am, so my question is, are the tribes allowed to manage their forests differently than the state?
Oh, I see. Thank you Supervisor. Yes, yes, they are. The tribes have a, they're recognized more for their sovereign powers than states are actually recognized in regards and respect to the management of their lands and the resources on those lands.
Just to be clear, we have more restrictions than the tribes?
That is my understanding. That is the way it is in Montana. I don't know what it is in the other states, but I would imagine it's the same because that relationship with the federal government and the tribes is a direct relationship. And I would imagine that that applies to all of the tribal lands.
To that point, it's the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Martin, questions?
Yes, you know, when I looked at this and I see that they want to transfer to the state, my problem is, I don't trust state. I don't. I've seen some of the stuff they've done and it is just not, it's no better than the feds in my opinion. But what I liked about that presentation that we just saw was the thing that says, if they transfer this property, these lands, it's promised to keep it public. My concern is and has always been that when they were going to transfer federal lands into state, then the states would turn around, sell it to developers. And then what, what's the end result? We lose it all. So seeing that part of your agenda is the promise to keep it public, as long as that is legal and enforceable, that's a great thing to put in there because then it would mandate, mandate the state to do what you're saying, keep it public. And that's, that's my, my agenda, if you will. Public lands are public lands. They should be kept public and they should not be restrictions unduly on our citizens to utilize them. So if you are successful in this transfer business, as long as that promise to keep it public is enforceable by law, then I would be, I would be all for it. I'm just afraid that, you know, you, you put in there, promise to keep it public, but is it lawful? Could, could that at the level of the courts aside, that they, that would be a thing that was added on that was absolutely enforceable because otherwise, the state's going to get it and what are they going to do with it? I think that it's sell it. It's sell it to developers. So I appreciate that, that presentation you made. If, if that promise to keep it public is enforceable, then I'm with you 100%.
Thank you Supervisor. Any other questions? Supervisor Lemon, thank you.
I just want to let you know that I'm proud member of the American Lands Council as an individual. I love the work this organization does and I would completely endorse the county joining.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Gold, any comments?
If the state was going to sell all the land, why haven't they sold all the state trust land? That's all available for sale now, not, not at a very high rate really. They haven't got, done a very good job of putting that back into public hands. So I'm not that particularly concerned that the state would sell it, but it might be the devil's bargain that the only way that we can get it back from the federal government is to make the promise that we wouldn't sell it as a state. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Ms. Fielder, I, I and a lot of my colleagues on the board followed very closely that Supreme Court case, Utah versus United States, and we were disappointed that they didn't take that up. But it sounds like you have, you've maybe adjusted and have a different strategy on how to ultimately get there. Most people don't understand that unless the federal government is, you know, specifically appropriating public lands, then they're just holding these lands in trust forever. And I don't think that that was really what was intended originally. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman. And we have, American Lands Council has really had a strong effort towards persuading Utah to file. to file the case with the U.S. Supreme Court. And we continue those efforts with the federal district court level with not only the state of Utah, but other states as well. The more states and local governments and organizations that step up to the plate and ask the courts for the states to be treated like states as originally intended, the higher our chances are of actually achieving that. As far as, if I may, if it's all right with you, address the question that was raised about keeping the land public?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So the federal bill that we have proposed at American Lands Council and drafted and has been through Ledge Council at the congressional level would require the state legislatures to pass resolutions through the open legislative process that would identify which lands they want, when they want them, and they would have to state the purpose for those lands. And if the legislature says, "We are going to acquire this chunk of federal land because we want it to be state public land and we want to manage it better," the state would be required, under our federal bill, to manage it and administer the land for the purpose in which it's conveyed. If they said that they wanted the land for some other use, for industrial use or for watershed purposes to produce more water yield, the state would be required to administer the land for the purpose that the legislature identified in their acquisition resolution. So that's how we lock it into law. The federal bill requires it, and in many states, the state constitution already requires this. That's why state lands have, state trust lands have to be managed for the highest and best use for the beneficiaries, because that same language was put into the Enabling Acts when those land grants were made to the states.
Thank you for that. Spot on. All right, any other questions before we let her go? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ma'am, do you know what happened after the admission of the state of Nebraska to the Union? It seemed before that, the public lands were returned to the states and following the admission of Nebraska, they were no longer returned, or returned at a greatly reduced rate.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, thank you for the question. I'm sure there are others that would know the history more closely, but in general, what was occurring was back in the 1920s and '30s, the states were rallying to gain control of the federal lands in their states. They were saying, "This is not fair. This is not right. The states have a right to these lands. They were promised to us in our statehood Enabling Acts." Just as the prior western states in the frontier of the colonies did the same thing back in the 1830s, they had to rally and compel Congress in the 1830s to transfer, divest control, divest federal control of the land to state jurisdiction. And so that was done throughout the Midwest and what were called the western states at that time, which included Florida and Missouri and Ohio and on up. Well, when the newer states came into existence in the West and were admitted into the Union, a lot of that happened in the late 1800s and the early 1900s. And again, these states were rallying, it was actually state of Colorado was one of the leaders in the rally. And they were back in Congress making the same arguments. And there was a major bill granting unreserved federal lands to the states. And then the world wars began to affect our country and attract the country's attention. And so all of those efforts by the states to gain control of their lands seemed to be sidetracked by the war effort that happened. And so that occurred, you know, in the 19, late 19-teens, and then World War II hit in the late 1930s, early 1940s. And it just seemed to divert the attention of the nation until more recently, when the sagebrush rebellion cropped up, there were promises made to the states through the Federal Land Policy Management Act in the 1980s that, when the federal government said, "It's no longer the policy of the United States to dispose of federal lands." But they promised us in that federal act that there would be local control, there would be sustained yields off of the, from the resources, there'd be local planning there were, and that we would get payment in lieu of taxes because the states couldn't tax the soil. The federal government would compensate the states in lieu of that with tax value. But what we've learned since then is the federal government is breaking every one of those promises. And the PILT money, the P-I-L-T money that they're giving the states is literally pennies in lieu of trillions rather than the actual taxable value of that landscape. So it's taken a while to mount a new charge. And American Lands Council is one of the organizations that's been on the cutting edge of this. I would say we're probably the most contemporary. We were formed back in 2012 to pick up the torch that others had, for one reason or another, not been able to sustain. And we are 100% dedicated to carrying this forward until we're successful.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Martin?
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, talking about the state trust lands, as you may know, the Boquias Ranch has 750,000 acres of land and the majority is private property, but there's a significant amount of state trust lands in there. And I'll tell you what happens on Boquias today. If you talk about control, if you want to go on those state trust lands, you have to pay. You have to pay the owners of that ranch for access there. So if these state trust lands are being utilized for the best use, the state of Arizona has them, they let the owners of the ranch, there's the agreement to let them on private property. They gave them essentially control over the state trust lands. If I want to go on the Boquias Ranch today and go to state trust lands, I have to pay a fee. That's what I'm saying. It's not, I don't think it's all clear and cut and dried about the state managing state trust lands. There's always a problem there. And state trust lands, in my opinion, as a citizen, why do I have to pay another fee? And that's exactly what happens on Boquias. It's real, it's there, you can go check on it and find out that 60% is private, 40% is state trust lands, and you're going to pay to go on those state trust lands. That's why I don't really trust state of Arizona managing these lands.
Mr. Chairman, one distinction there, if I may?
Okay, and then Supervisor Martin, or, okay, yeah, Supervisor Borelli has a comment after you, Madam, or Ms. Fielder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So in our federal bill, the legislature does not have to request the lands as state trust lands. The state trust lands were granted to the states for a specific purpose, and that was to generate revenue to support probably your schools and your roads and other common forms of government. So that's the purpose of state trust lands as your Enabling Act requires and most likely your constitution requires. But with the rest of the federal lands, the state legislature has the complete flexibility to acquire the land for any purpose that it chooses. It could acquire more land for state trust land purposes to generate money for your schools, or it could acquire land for other purposes. So there's a distinction between whether the acquired lands would be state trust lands that have to generate revenues for the beneficiaries, or if you could acquire the land simply for the public use and enjoyment of the citizens of your state and your visitors.
Thank you. Supervisor Borelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think we're also missing a point that because of all these EPA regulations, we're unable to really go out there and manage our forests and get rid of the dead fuel that's lying on the ground because of all the EPA restrictions. You know, it's managing that forest, that's why if you look, there's not a lot of wildfires on Indian land because of the fact that they're allowed to actually go out there and harvest the dead fuel that's on the ground, so on and so forth. And that, those restrictions need to be lifted on the state, too.
Thank you. Absolutely. Any other comments? Ms. Fielder, thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation today.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you Supervisors Letman, Borelli, Martin, and Gould.
Would it be possible to get a copy of that presentation so that we could forward it to our board members?
Yes, sir. I will make a PDF and send it over to your clerk.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Board, I'm going to move up item number 61, just to get it out of the way. It's discussion, possible action, Mojave County's possible membership in the American Land Council. As Ms. Fielder testified this morning, there's really three levels: silver at $5,000, gold at $15,000, platinum at $25,000. I didn't put an amount. I thought I would leave that up to the majority of the board to decide that. I'd open it up to the board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we join as a silver membership government, the American Lands Council, for $5,000.
Second.
Heard that motion in second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the consent agenda, items number five through 48. Supervisor Letman, would you like to remove any items from the consent?
I have no items to remove.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
Strangely enough, I do not have any items to remove.
Thank you, Supervisor Gould. Supervisor Borelli?
Yes, I'd like to have number 34.
34, thank you. Supervisor Martin?
I have item 16.
16, thank you. And I'm not going to pull anything, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus items 16 and 34.
So moved.
Put that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Move to item number 16. Approve the purchase of tuition and fees from Mojave Community College in accordance with the Mojave County Procurement Code, Article 3, Section 8, competition impracticable, allowing program participants to receive post-secondary educational opportunities under the Workforce Investment and Opportunities Act program from July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Funding for the services may exceed $100,000 and is based on and subject to available WIOA grant funds to include audit, or excuse me, adult, dislocated worker and youth on behalf of the Community Development, Community Services Department. Supervisor Martin?
Yes, the question I had, it says including Law Enforcement Academy participation. So what I'm wondering is that, so will that money be used to pay for the sheriff to send people to the Law Enforcement Academy?
Chairman Langenfeldter, Supervisor Martin, I think the item that you polled is MCC. I think the one that you're talking about is Arizona Western, but I can still address your question on that. This is specific to the community services projects for the Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act. It's separate from anything that the sheriff would do. Now, if the sheriff sends people through the community services program, it may help fund that through those grant funds for the workforce enforcement opportunity. But if the sheriff has deputies that they need to get through that program, we will work with them independently to get that taken care of.
Okay, that's what I was concerned with, is could we help the sheriff's office out in getting deputies certified? If that money's going to be used for that, that's great.
I think that that would be a question between the sheriff's office and community services if those people are eligible for those funds.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, sorry about that. We need a motion on 16, don't we? We're just in discussion. We need a motion in a second for item 16.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. You heard that motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. That takes care of 16. Item number 34, sitting as the Board of Directors for the Horizon Six County Improvement District. One, approve Horizon Six Water System Fund, budget appropriation of $500,000. That represents funding to be received from the state of Arizona through the state's fiscal year 26 budget. Two, approve debt authorization in the amount of $525,000 for a purpose of obtaining a facility with the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona through their water infrastructure, water supply development revolving fund. Three, approve pledged payment sources of $500,000 sourced to an appropriation of funds from the state of Arizona through the state's fiscal year 26 budget, and $25,000 sourced to district cash reserves. And four, authorize the county manager's office to execute a WIFA loan agreement and supporting documents for principal value up to the debt authorization amount in connection with the district's pending application for Water Infrastructure, Water Supply Development Revolving Fund grant, and loan funds to design and construct new fire booster pumps and associated electrical and mechanical upgrades for the Horizon Six Water System. Supervisor Borelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have Mr. Lattowski come up and kind of explain a little bit on the process of this.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Supervisor Borelli, the Public Works Department, with the support of the board in February, applied for a grant and loan from WIFA in pursuing the improvement of the existing Horizon Six Water System, the improvement consisting of installation of two new fire booster pumps. As a result of the fantastic opportunity that was provided to us through the state, the $500,000 appropriation toward this project, this enables a financial approach whereby, and this is where we're seeking board approval, to still pursue the WIFA grant, noting that the $500,000 of designated state funds can serve as the loan payback amount. And by pursuing the WIFA grant slash loan, this will enable the district to have access to what we estimate to be $350,000 of pure grant funding. Staff re-looked at the overall opinion of cost on this project, and we do foresee that for approximately $875,000 is our opinion of cost, that the fire booster pump project can be carried out with a small contingency value. So how does that all come together? We anticipate with WIFA's moving forward with this grant slash loan, that they will make $350,000 available to us. We already have $500,000 available that will come to us as a loan from WIFA. We'll repay that loan with the $500,000 from the state. And staff is recommending an additional $25,000 from district reserves. The district has a healthy cash reserve of about $138,000 now, so having that additional $25,000 of funding from the district actually opens us up for another 40% grant from WIFA.
Mr. Chair or Vice Chair?
Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair. So just to be clear, no additional property tax will be incurred on these homeowners? Is that correct?
Chairman Langenfeldter, Supervisor Borelli, based on our opinion of cost, we anticipate we can move forward with design and construction of fire booster pumps with this funding mechanism.
Excellent. I like it. Tax-free. Thank you.
Any other comments? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lattowski, any costs to the general fund?
Chairman Langenfeldter, Supervisor Gould, there are no costs to the general fund.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do you entertain a motion?
With that said, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Put that motion in second. Call again. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you, board. That takes us to our one and only public hearing, item number 49. I'm going to open up the public hearing on item number 49. Discussion and possible action, approve the adoption of BOS Resolution Number 2025-125, approving the extinguishment of a public utility easement for Edwin Bogart, owner of APN 353-39-016 in the Silver Springs area, to extinguishing a 60-foot-wide, 1,292.5-foot-long, more or less, ingress egress and public utility easement, more particularly described in Exhibit A, along an unnamed roadway along the easterly portion of parcel 316, per Mojave County records of survey, 019-026A, within Cedar Hills Ranches Unit 10, Mojave County, Arizona, whereas said ingress egress and public utility easement was granted per said record of survey and retain the utility easement agreement fee, 9505-3129, Book 2632, Page 849, per Mojave County records. We do have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Edwin Bogart. Would you like to come up to the podium and have your three minutes? You'd speak, give your name and address for the clerk. Thank you so much.
My name is Edwin Bogart. My address is 14975 East Toward Road. When I bought my property eight years ago, I had no, we were never told about ingress egress. So as I came upon this, when I had the electric company came and hook up to our house that we had... So as I came upon this, when I had the electric company came and hook up to our house that we had installed, I had to put a roadway in for them to put my house in. And then this roadway that I installed is in the 60-foot ingress egress, which I was told that for public access, it was only 30 feet, not 60 feet. 60 feet was for public utilities, 30 feet was for public. So now that I put this roadway in, all of a sudden with the activity that's in our Silver Springs area, we have a lot more people coming. And so now all of a sudden, on this roadway that I installed, everybody is using my, technically, I call it my driveway to my house, which comes by, I wake up and I see four-wheelers side by sides going down my driveway that, you know, I didn't know that this ingress egress was there. So I did some more research on it, and I worked with the Public Works gentlemen and filled out a form to try to extinguish this. There is a 40-acre property behind me, but there is a roadway to that property, so if this does get extinguished, it's not that they can't access their property, because there is two other roads to get to their property, and there's only two 40-acre plots in between these two roadways. So I'm just trying to stop people from going through my driveway and tearing up my private property to stop this, but it does not affect the properties behind me, because there is two other roads that's there for them to access their property. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on item number 49 during the public hearing? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Open it up to the board. Would the board like to hear from Director Lotosky? Want to come to the podium and give an overview, Mr. Lotosky?
Yes, Chairman Linkenfelter, members of the board, this is a very straightforward action. The section of land that is being proposed for extinguishment, Silver Spring Road is just east of there, so the general public has Silver Spring Road as their main point of access through the, through the area. The extinguishment will not create any severance of legal access to any of the adjoining properties, and staff recommends the board consider moving forward.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director Lotosky?
Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lotosky, so the utility companies were, they signed off on it, and they signed off letters of protest from any of the neighbors. They were all supportive of it.
That's practice of refusal.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Heard that motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you, Director Lotosky. We'll move to our regular agenda. The first item is item number 50, discussion of possible action regarding approve or deny appeal of unsafe structure pursuant to Mojave County Ordinance 2021-03 for parcel 313-48-126, also known as 7668 East Monte Tesoro Drive, Kingman, Arizona. We have one person that's signed up to speak, Mr. Mark Williford.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to hear about this issue. I purchased a house at 7668 Monte Tesoro back in 2001. It was an investment for retirement and has a very strong structure with slump block over two-by-four frame, 16 on center with plywood sheathing, and it's supporting four-by-six-foot beams, giving it a rustic look. The roof had 26 tons of white gravel on it bonded to tar. And we lived in it for about five years and then moved to Kingman's. My wife could be closer to the ECA school where she teaches at. And over the years, I've been gradually doing improvements to the floor walls, living area, and trying to get it ready for possibly moving back into or selling. And unfortunately, have neglected the roof and fascia boards over the recent years, and have really gotten to be in disrepair, and I've been saving up money and trying to get together the materials I need to do the repairs. And I'm committed to doing everything I can to get this resolved and fixed in a timely fashion. I just need more time. The weather lately has been very hot, and when I'm out there early in the morning, as soon as the sun comes up, it's just like you're roasting. And it's been difficult with me dealing with the heat. I'd like to have more time so I could work on it when the months where it's more cooler weather in the fall, I could get a lot more done and be more productive with it. Also, still need to get some more building materials and labor, and building materials have skyrocketed recently and made it more challenging to get this project finished. So I'd like to request more time on that. With the 26 tons of gravel that were on the roof, there were some leaks, and it was very difficult getting to the leaks. So I removed all the gravel, put down on the last ceramic and polyester cloth system, which held up pretty good for about seven years, and then that fell apart. Some of the rocks were still embedded in tar despite my efforts to chisel them as flat as I could. And the cloth, if it doesn't set flat on the surface, you get ponding, and then leaks are likely to occur. So now I've got a rubber system, which should work really well, and came highly recommended by roofers.
Thank you. If you would stay close, we're going to pull up staff to give an overview of this, and then if the board has questions, we'll call you back up. Is that okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, you had three minutes to state your case, and if we have additional questions, we'll pull you back up.
I have a question.
Oh, okay. Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Sir, so you hired an engineer.
Yes.
In the engineering firm, what did they have to say?
He said the structure was one of the strongest he's seen. It's got doubled the strength it needs to hold up the structure. It's got slump block, which is four inches deep, with two-by-four, 16 on center, with plywood sheathing underneath that. So it's each, either one of those would be adequate to hold the structure up, and it's got double what it needs. The four-by-six inch beams are all very solid. No sign of rot with those. Problem with the fascia board, some of it's separated because the nails got kind of rusted out, so I need to replace that. But it's mainly, it's mainly cosmetic, not structural. The fascia board does do a little bit to support the fiber board. Most, 90% of the fiber board salvageable and still good and very solid, gives it plenty of lateral support structurally. The 10% that needs to be replaced is, total roof area is about 2,600 square feet, and the area that needs to be replaced is about 100 square feet. So that's less than 10%. From what I understand, talking to different people and doing a lot of hours of research online, that it doesn't require a permit because it falls under minor repair. And permits are required when you get over 25%, and depends on area. But I've been looking into that, but when I talked to them about the building and zoning, they said I need a permit to do anything on my roof, and I didn't seem to think that was right or correct. So I looked into it, and that's what I found out. So I'm trying to do this on a budget, and the more money I can put into hiring labor and materials, the better. But I'd like to request as much time as possible so I can get into cooler months, where I can be more productive and not have to quit at nine o'clock when the heat's, you know, just blazing out.
Sure.
Been really difficult.
And the, I look, the engineer had given you a detail on how he thought you should repair that, you had that fiber board, which looks like it's coming apart, because the water probably got it back under it on the edge of your roof and rotted that part out.
And if I, the fiber board, you can't buy that stuff anymore. This house was built in 79. So what builders have recommended and what Leggett Engineering recommended is just using plywood or OSB, and then building that up on top of two-by-fours, which should actually be more structurally sound and stronger than what was there before. Coating it with a rubber coating, which adheres to wood really, very well, much better than silicone. And it's supposed to hold up for 20 years, according to Henry's, where I bought it from. And I've been waiting to get an answer from the county regarding a building permit. They never got back to me after three attempts to contact them about the cost of a building permit. I'm trying to put together a budget, but if I, it doesn't require a building permit because it's such a small percentage of the roof, only 10%, I'd like to put the money towards, you know, hiring help, which I will need to finish this. And Leggett Engineering said the structure was safe as it sits, but he recommends some work being done so that it could be lived in safely without rain coming in or anything like that. Right now, there's some leaks because of the roof, and I want to resolve all that, ideally before monsoons pick up. But right now, I've got it tarped over until I get a straight answer from the county about the building permit thing.
Thank you, sir.
But I'd like to request that the red tag be lifted, just because it says in the red tag it's an unsafe structure, and it is condemned to be abated. And according to the engineer, that's not the case. It's a safe structure as it sits. He just recommends getting the work done before it would be lived in, which is just obvious. You know, you don't want to live in a house that's leaking. It has an opening in the roof or the awning going around the perimeter. And there's two sides where fascia boards separated that I need to reattach, and he gave me all the instructions how to do that, and also has some builders that are helping me out with ideas and recommendations and inspections.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant before we call upstairs? Supervisor Letman, thank you.
Mr. Williford, so I'm reading the, the report from Leggett Engineering too, and it does say the building should not be lived in until repairs are made. Are you living in the building?
Nobody's been living in it. It's been vacant, and I've just been going over there as I have time to get the work done. But building materials, especially roofing, liquid roof, rubber coating is very expensive, and I've been buying it as I've had money and saved up for it and budgeted for it. And right now, I need to get some labor to just help me with some of the things that are kind of a two-man job. It's difficult to do with one person, especially with the fascia board.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. If we have other questions, we'll call you back up. Okay?
Thank you.
Director Holtry, can you come up to the podium, please? Give an overview of this item, please.
Yes. Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Just a brief little overview and history. We received a complaint from the Homeowners Association in Valley Vista subdivision about this property that was in disrepair. We had our inspector go out and take a look at it, at the structure itself. It is a little unsightly. That's not something that we're looking at. We are looking at the structural integrity of the, of the structure itself. The inspector did determine that the structure was unsafe due to the roof and the repairs that are needed for the roof. With that, we sent a notice of violation to the property owner, the property owner, and we applaud the property owner for going out and getting an engineer to make a determination on the property and what needs to be fixed or done. And if the engineer would have come back and said the, the structure is completely safe, then we would have removed our violation. Because the, the engineer states in his report that the, the structure should not be lived in, we continued with our condemnation of the, the structure to remove the certificate of occupancy so that the structure cannot be lived in, and that's the purpose of determining that it is an unsafe structure and that it is condemned. This is not a structure that we're looking to go in and abate. It is a sound structure, and the engineer does state that it's a structure that we want to keep that unsafe status on it so that it cannot be occupied until the repairs are made. We have been trying to contact the property owner to discuss the permit with him. The permit would allow him to remove that condemnation on the property if he pulls that permit. We would be able to remove that condemnation on it as he does those repairs. The fee, the re-roofing fee is around $120, and then there was some structural repairs that needed to be done. That was an estimated of $150 for the permit itself. That permit is a good, is good for 180 days. As long as they get an inspection, they'll keep getting continuances on that as well. And as soon as he applies for that permit, we can remove that condemnation status or the unsafe structure status. With that, I'm open to any questions that you have.
Open it up to the board for questions. Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So it is repairable?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Borelli, that's correct. Yeah, the engineer stated that it's, it's a sound structure. It's just not safe to be lived in, and that's why we want our condemned status on it.
Any other questions for the Director? Director Holtry, so even if it's, if the building is red-tagged and deemed unsafe, the applicant can still work on the roof, right? The only thing that it precludes is that you can't have anybody actually living there. Is that correct?
Can't live in it. We do require a permit for the roof. And so we, we would need him to come and pull that permit to do the work on the roof.
And that permit, you said, was $150?
Roof, the roof permit was 120. There are structural improvements that the engineer calls out. That is a separate permit that would require, it's 150. So total, it's probably around almost $300.
$300, a little less than $300 in, in permits required, and that buys him, you said, what, 180 days?
That's correct.
Until?
Until he would need to come and just get an inspection from us and showing that he's working on it. If he gets that inspection, he gets another six months.
The applicant said that he had reached out, I think I heard him say, three times. Can you tell us what's going on with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we've, so we've sent notification through certified mail for the, the appeal process that he's applied for. We've also sent him individual emails stating the, the notice of this appeal process, but also reaching out to discuss the permit with him. We've also made some phone calls, trying to reach out to discuss the permit to let him know we didn't want to have to come to this. We wanted to let him know that, hey, we could just pull this permit, and you could continue on with the work on the, on the structure. We weren't able to get ahold of him.
Okay, I'm going to call the applicant back up, if I could, just really quick. Mr. Williford, could you come back up to the podium, please? Are you able to afford that, the less than $300 in, in the permits that you would require? And it sounds to me like you can still work on the roof or all the improvements that are necessary. The only thing is, you can't have anybody live there until it's signed off on.
Yeah, I, I haven't worked on the roof in the last, since they put the red tag up until I got an answer about. I contacted their permit office to find out what it would cost, and didn't, never heard back. One time Patty Palin had connected me, and the lady was out. I left a message and didn't hear back. So it's been, you know, kind of up in the air. I didn't want to start working on it until I knew I was doing the right procedure. But everything I've researched online told me that permit's not required if it's under a percentage of the roof area. It's 2,600 square feet total roof area. The part where the roof sheathing has to be replaced is only 10%. And everybody I talked to and what I saw online shows it doesn't require a permit. If I have to get a permit, I will, but if it doesn't require a permit, I'd like to put the money towards paying people to help me.
Sure.
And I'm on a tight budget, fix income.
I understand that. Unless I see some sort of an engineering letter or something that says that it doesn't require a permit because it doesn't fall under the ratios, I mean, I don't know if you're going to address that point too, Director Holtry, I don't.
Yeah, he had, he had told me you don't need a permit for, for the work you need to do here.
The engineer told you that? Director Lotosk, or, excuse me, Holtry, can you address that point, please?
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, Supervisors, we do require a permit for any roofing repair that you need to be done, as well as the structural repairs that need to be done underneath the roof as well. One of the things that we are requiring as well is the engineering report. And so that's usually one of the biggest hurdles, is going and getting an engineer to create that report. He's already done it, so he's already on the path to get it going. That's usually one of the biggest difficulties, is getting that engineer report. So all he would need to do is come in and apply for that permit.
What, what is the applicant referring to when he's talking about these percentages?
I'm not familiar with those percentages. I don't know if my chief building official is familiar with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
And we adopted the international, eighteen international building code, which is extreme on its requirements of permits. Um, I voted against that. Hard to believe. The, it's just over the top on the requirement for permits. So I don't know when, you know, how many shingles can it replace without a permit, guys?
Chairman Linkfelter, uh, boards, um, the percentage he's talking about, some jurisdictions have created a percentage of roof deck for rotting. Um, we've had discussions with the building code advisory board regarding re-roofing and having to replace roof decking. The analogy was they have to scrape the roof off and then have an inspection from us for the roof decking. The, the building code advisory board has actually came back and said, uh, well, we're going to leave that to the contractor of what percentage of roof is damaged. We didn't go with that. If you're going to replace structural members of the roof system, it has to be inspected because it has a nailing pattern. So basically there is no percentage that we have as a jurisdiction. So the other part of it too is, is a re-roof permit is a flat fee, a hundred and nine dollars for any type of roof, shingle, shake, anything of that nature.
So what is the threshold? One shingle?
Entire roof.
No, you said, Scott mentioned roofing work. Any roofing work? So is roofing repair require a permit?
Supervisor Gould, the, uh, there is a exception in the code for repairs. And I guess that's up to my interpretation of the code. Few shingles, some, some, you know, wind damage or something like that would be repair. Obviously you've seen the pictures of this, this structure. That's not, I mean, the entire roof is damaged.
Now, it's a clarifying question on our, how we apply the code.
Correct. And that would be probably my interpretation as the building official of what is considered repair or what is considered replacement.
Interesting.
That's how the code's written.
Thank you, sir. One more clarifying question.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so a hundred and eighty days is the length of a building permit?
That's, uh, Mr. Chair Supervisor Gould, that's the timeframe that we give him to call for an inspection.
So does it have to be complete or does he have to be showing progress?
Sure, just showing progress, just have.
That ends up being a problem. People get charged for another building permit fee.
Yeah, we don't want to get into that.
And I think it's because they don't, they aren't done, so they don't call for inspection.
No, yeah, we would hope to educate the public that, uh, as long as they keep calling inspections and they can show that they're making progress, then we'll continue to extend their permit.
And I think it actually says abandonment of the project is what the, the former building code said. I'm not sure what this international code says. Was, it was, uh, so the permit was good for a hundred and eighty days, uh, unless they abandoned the project.
And usually that takes them coming and telling us, hey, I'm abandoning this project. It's hard to determine, uh, we're not going to come in and say, hey, it looks like you abandoned this project. Usually we wait until they say, hey, I've abandoned this project.
How often does that happen?
Sometimes, sometimes it does happen that people, they run out of money. They don't want to move forward with the project. Yeah.
Sure. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
This is just a, oh, it's a one, it's a one-time fee. This guy's not going to have to come back and pay a bunch of additional fees if he's not done a hundred and eighty days, right? Maybe he calls for inspection like he's supposed to, it gets extended and he has not to pay another fee.
Chairman Linkfelter, Supervisors, there actually would be probably two to three inspections involved with this. One would be the roof deck. So you'd have a hundred and eighty days in order to repair the roof deck prior to the layman of, underlaymen or the roofing material. So the next inspection would be the roofing material and then a final inspection.
Chairman. Yeah, yeah, Supervisor Latman.
So I'm looking at the pictures that you're taking on there and, and Mr. Wilford, I, I sympathize with your concerns, but I think we're touching more than ten percent of the roof. Okay, at this. And, and I, and I'd recommend you get your permit. And this problem goes away.
Director Holtry, I'd, I'd like to ask you to, since you're here and the applicant is here, to touch bases with him and to make sure that, that he gets what he needs. I'd really appreciate that so that he can get started with doing what he needs to do, so.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Attorney Davis.
Sorry, that was much louder than I was anticipating. Um, just so the board is aware on the positioning of this appeal, upholding or approving the appeal, approving the appeal would mean that the red tag is removed, the condemnation is removed. Denying the appeal would mean that the red tag remain in place, but he can still do everything that we've talked about. He can still get the permit. He can still fix it. And then the condemnation, the red tag is removed once he pulls that permit for clarification.
Right. So all we're really talking about is assuring that nobody can reside at the property, right?
Correct.
Any other comments? If not, I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
I'll second that.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. Thank you. Move to item number fifty-one, discussion of possible action, approve the adoption of BOS resolution twenty-two-five dash one-two-four, approving the Mojave County Emergency Operations Plan that describes how Mojave County will organize and respond to emergencies and disasters countywide. Director Lottoski.
Chairman Linkfelter, members of the board, uh, thank you for your time on this. Every few years, uh, Mojave County, uh, reviews and, uh, updates its, uh, emergency response and recovery plan for the county's, uh, overall framework and response to, uh, emergency incidents and, uh, disasters. I want to acknowledge, uh, Mike Browning, who's with us. He's our emergency response coordinator. Mike and his staff, Warren Welburn and Al Sheikin, uh, were working, uh, on this, uh, update. And particularly with the, uh, uh, we call them emergency support functions. Uh, they're, um, well, a group of fifteen of them and, uh, uh, various departments of the county have certain leads on those, uh, as it pertains to their area of practice. And, uh, uh, Mike and his team were, were very busy with that. And, uh, as it came, um, mid-year and with the transition of emergency management, the public works, as well as, uh, uh, just entering a new fiscal year, we really saw a great opportunity to kind of overall the, overhaul, uh, the base plan, uh, what we would call an emergency operations plan. So, uh, uh, we did a rewrite and, uh, really made it simplified. It's about a sixty-page, uh, base plan, which, uh, will pair with the emergency support function procedures, uh, for, uh, each, uh, emergency, uh, management element and response. And the, the advantage of this is, uh, we just abbreviated the content more to, uh, bulletize and, and table-based content. Uh, the base, uh, emergency operations plan addresses concept of operations, priorities, uh, alerts, uh, communications with the public. Uh, but it also has a, a large chunk of it, uh, uh, introduces all of the emergency support functions. So anyone, especially yourselves, get a immediate snapshot on what those emergency functions are and what departments may have lead in each, uh, support function. And that ranges from transportation, public works, engineering, firefighting, um, and, uh, other pub, public health-related responses. Uh, but it also, this emergency operations plan also contains a, a very user-friendly presentation of the incident command system. And that is the emergency management framework by which, uh, any organization is going to operate under, whether it's just their organization themselves or their organization working with other agencies, uh, you know, outside of, say, the county, et cetera. Uh, so that framework is very important, uh, you know, for persons participating in any emergency response to be up to speed on. And we have a, uh, about twenty pages or so in this emergency operations plan that, you know, highlights that management framework and, and very easy to understand, bullets, figures, et cetera. So with that, I, uh, I'll put forward the emergency operations plan for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Director. Questions for Director Lottoski? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Lottoski. A couple of things that I noted in there. At one point it says that the county manager will advise the board of supervisors if they need to declare an emergency. Um, it probably ought to read the chairman. It could advise the board, but the chairman's going to have to make that decision because I believe there's either, what, a twenty-four or forty-eight hour waiting period on calling a special meeting. So that's going to fall to the chairman. And then you'll call the special meeting to get the rest of the board to, uh, approve what the chairman has done. The other thing I noticed, any concern about the public works building and the motor pool being the two, being that those are so close together. If something were to happen to one of those, it would probably affect the other building.
Yes.
So, but, and I almost was thinking maybe they should spread it out into the county. But if we lose communication, most of the assets are up in the Kingman area. If you have to send a runner with a note, um, it's a quicker run if you're up here where the equipment is rather than, it's a long run from Lake Havasu to Kingman. So I don't know that initially that was my theory, my feeling was that was too consolidated, but I, I'm not sure that I still feel that way. But I'm somewhat concerned about the motor pool and the public works building being position two and position three.
Um, and I, I believe, uh, Chairman Linkfelter, Supervisor Gould, you may be referring to the, uh, um, the backup emergency operations center being development services and public works. But yes, uh, uh, they are in the, uh, a very close vicinity of each other.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Otherwise, I don't see a motion. Supervisor Borelli.
Yes, um, the debris, get back to the debris, uh, is there, do we have any contractors contract outside the county for debris mitigation?
Excellent question. That's Chairman Linkfelter, Supervisor Borelli. Uh, yes, uh, we do have, uh, some general, uh, general contract related job order contracts that, that we can utilize, uh, you know, for certain assistance. Uh, uh, they're fairly dominant in actually the flood control realm. So, uh, you know, that's something we can certainly turn to with the augment our forces in going with debris removal.
Because, I mean, after, Mr. Chair, after we just experienced a flood in Mojave Valley, uh, that area, and even Lake Havasu is prone to, uh, flash floods. And I'm noticing the twenty-twenty-two, uh, uh, plan had four hundred and eighty-seven pages. This is very, very condensed.
Absolutely. And I, I just want to credit Tara Acton and her staff. Uh, I sat down and met with them a couple of weeks ago specifically with that question, what contracts do we have access to? As well as cooperative contracts for emergency.
Thank you.
Other comments? Do you entertain a motion?
I think the motion is approved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Do have it. It's ordered. Thank you. Item number fifty-two, discussion of possible action, sitting as the Board of Mojave County Flood Control District. Approve the revised proposal received from Yellow Jacket Well Drilling Services, clarifying the intent of the project design and increasing the project cost by two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, forty-one dollars and fifty cents to nine hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars, fifty cents, utilizing City of Tucson Cooperative Contract two-two-six zero-five-nine-zet-dash-zero-three, job order contract for well drilling services for installation of wells as previously approved for the U.S. Geological Survey Monitoring Wells Project. Funding for the project will be sourced to Flood Control District budgeted funds. Director Acton.
Good morning, Chairman. I just wanted to give a quick overview. So we put this on the regular consent agenda because it impacts the USGS monitoring wells project and because the consultant engineer is available through the team's call to give you the more technical, um, basis for the reason for the change. So I can give you a very quick layman summary. This was, agenda is under my name because the original contract award using the cooperative was under my name. The change order is necessary to complete the project. In layman's terms, the contractor, when they bid it, assumed that they would be inserting the smaller diameter well inside the pre-drilled wider diameter well. The reality of the design is that they will need to drill an additional well at the site just outside of the larger diameter well. So this goes from what would potentially have been just three well drilling opportu, or well drilling events with a smaller well encased in a larger well. It's actually two drillings at each site location. That's the reason for the change order. If you want more technical information than that, I would suggest that you work with the consultant engineer.
Thank you, Director Acton. Uh, questions for Director Acton or the engineer?
Chairman.
Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Director Acton, have they started this project?
I don't believe they've started any, um, any actual drilling on the site. This was caught prior to any commencement of work. And so we wanted to come to the board, make sure that we were fully transparent on what the actual costs would be to get it done. But I would rely on, uh, Director Holtry if, if there was anything else.
How much of this is the U.S. Geological Survey paying?
Since we're calling it their project. Mr. Chair Supervisor Gould, uh, the USGS is only supplying the equipment for each of the well sites. I'm not exactly sure on the cost of the equipment, uh, but we would be in charge of all of the construction costs and the construction costs to secure the sites as well.
So what, again, what was the reason that we decided to drill our own wells instead of getting permission from private well hole, holder, or owners to monitor their wells? I have two wells and the state monitors my wells. Seems like it would be more cost efficient just to monitor the existing wells that are there instead of spending nearly a million dollars to drill wells just for monitoring.
Mr. Chairman.
Manager Elters.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman Supervisor Gould, initially the three wells were drilled and equipped by the USGS service years ago when the entire, uh, water model was developed to track and model the, um, impact of water pumping on the aquifer. These wells were vandalized and we, these monitoring wells were vandalized and we lost them. The equipment that is, um, proposed and planned to be installed provides, um, data that is more detailed and more frequent update than otherwise. So, um, that was the compelling reason to come to the board a while back, seek permission to proceed with the re-drilling of these wells with the understanding that the USGS service will still provide the equipment to equip them. So we can, uh, get the, um, updated information related to, uh, the, um, conditions of the water table in the area.
I remember when the original item came through.
Just, just wanted to remind you and other board members of the history getting up to this point.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Director Holtry.
Just to add to that a little bit, these wells would be different than just a private well as, uh, that we're looking at, like, uh, Director Acton mentioned. Um, we want to be able to monitor the, the water level below the, the ridge that is embedded in the basin. And so that's why we need a smaller diameter and then a larger diameter well. And also from my understanding, USGS wants, doesn't want to necessarily put this equipment on a private well, but would want to make sure that, uh, the county, we'll, we'll do continual maintenance on these well sites. We're going to put up some stations at each of them, uh, to make sure that they are, um, still protected. Uh, we're going to put some security fences around it as well. Um, we do have stand tech on the, on the line and they would be able to kind of maybe go into further why we need uh, our own wells as opposed to using private wells as well, if we want to inquire of them as well.
More interested in hearing from them? Okay. Yeah.
Kevin, are you available?
I, I'm on. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think Jarrett Fisher is on as well. Uh, the, the proposed wells are eleven hundred feet deep, one thousand one hundred feet. And then there is a, uh, pismeter that's actually installed in the same borehole. The borehole will actually be larger in diameter to accommodate the two wells. But, uh, the, the second well is a pismeter, which is used to monitor the upper water, uh, water quality as the water levels drop throughout the basin. And so the intent is to install one at eleven hundred feet, the other one will be at about six hundred feet inside the borehole. We did bid this out. Uh, there, there are very few drillers that can, can drill to these depths, but I don't think most of the private wells extend to eleven hundred feet. I think most of the wells, uh, currently extend, uh, far less than that. So I think that's the issue and, and USGS wanted the deeper wells to be able to monitor the water supply in, uh, in Mojave County.
Any questions for the engineer on that? Director Holtry, do you know if, um, is USGS working with, uh, City of Kingman? I mean, it, their wells, I don't, I don't remember how deep their wells are. Um, I don't think they're eleven hundred feet deep.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm not familiar with whether or not they're working with, with the City of Kingman, whether USGS is working with them.
Mr. Chairman.
Manager Elters.
One, one, thank you. One more comment. The location of these three wells were, were directed or selected by the USGS with their input to provide the, uh, to be away from the edge of the, of the aquifer and to provide the most reliable, uh, information going forward. Again, for the purpose of the county working with the USGS to model every few years with the, with the, with the data from these wells as well as any. as well as any other data that the ADWR provide.
Thank you, Manager. And you said that there's going to be fencing and he's going to put like razor wire over the top of it or something to protect the investment so they don't get vandalized again?
Absolutely. And then we will also place some weather stations at each of these locations that are regularly monitored by our, our staff at the flood control.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'd call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
For that motion, do I have a second, please?
Second.
Motion second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you. Item number 53, discussion of possible action, approve Mojave County's participation with the Local First Arizona, Northern Arizona Good Jobs Network Grant, including the approval of the agreement between Local First Arizona Foundation and Mojave County and authorize the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors to sign the agreement. Continued from our July 7th, 2025 meeting. Director Ersanbok?
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. A little bit of background, this is a Local First Arizona grant that they received through the state of Arizona, the state of Arizona. It's for the five northern counties and it focuses on four industries, construction, healthcare, hospitality, manufacturing, and transportation. We're on phase three. Phase one was just identifying the work gaps that we have and the stakeholders that we needed to be part of this. Spent a lot of time developing that list and creating partnerships. Phase two was validating the information that we have read and felt like was true by going out and meeting with the employers and making sure that the needs, that what their needs were going to be met, that we were going and along the right track and finding the right solutions. And then phase three is what we're working on now. And that is taking the information we learned, we've created programs and training and implementing that training. So in this case, for manufacturing for Mojave County, it will be manufacturing, we're going to train possible new employees as well as incumbent employees to get them the basic training that they need specific to manufacturing, but also construction. It's going to be free training to anyone, which is really important to us. When we created this training, some of them are, you know, $3,000 to $5,000. And we felt like if we could keep it free for our community and for all five communities that, that would benefit our employees the most. So what, because Mojave County has got the most employers that are in manufacturing, not only that's why they've come to us to have us be over that part of the grant, but we will also benefit the most from the grant with that. Coconino has a handful of manufacturers, the others have very, very few. The, the grant also goes, so Mojave College is over part of the grant and what they're going to receive funding for is, we talked about hospitality, but they're creating a small engine repair program for hospitality, so boats and, you know, any water sports that they have. And then some of the funding is going to our new and advanced manufacturing training center so that they can have some equipment that's brought in. The other impact with this that we feel is important is it really helps with our business retention expansion program that is important to the county and to our benefit, to our businesses as we help those businesses to have the trained employees ready and, and to then expand their, their abilities, then they're able to stay here longer and to, to expand. So some of the training specific is going to be something as simple as safety and hand tools, Ocean 10 and 30, but some of them gets really in a little bit more like manufacturing, electrical facilities, maintenance, general trades, commercial HVAC, plumbing, say, there's, it just goes on what the list is. We actually have about over 300 trainings that a person can get certified, not certified, they can get a certificate in. So basic certificates, but then if they can take those certificates to the employers and say, hey, this is what we're already trained in, here's proof. And that was part of what was really important to us with this grant is that we really focus on that. The other areas, other counties are focusing on some of the other, other industries. And so they will be coming into the county to work with us, whether it be preferred food service, CDL driving, construction, some of those others. And then we've got one that's non-tactical skills, which is what sometimes people call soft skills. And that's to make sure that they have the skills they need to go into the workforce and stay there. So that's what this grant entails. Some of it actually is funding specific to give back to the employer. If they hire somebody and they stay a certain time period, then they'll be able to get some money back.
Questions for Director Ersanbok?
Supervisor Letton?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Director Ersanbok, how do we measure success in these programs?
Everything's going to be monitored. So in this particular case, the training that we're offering, you can't go through the training without everything talks about, you know, what, what training they go through, how many people will go through, how many complete each program. And we'll have access to that on a monthly basis.
So is the compliance, as you try to measure success, the, the compliance component of this whole thing?
So that's the first one. The second one's going to be if they get jobs or if they, they, the incumbent workers are able to move up with their penalty.
But all, all of the expenses associated with like compliance measurement and management is being paid for out of the grant?
A hundred percent.
Okay. MCC or MC, do they also have, are they applying to Local First Arizona also for part of this?
Yes, yes, that, that's the one that they have, the two areas that they're getting funding from. The one is for the small engine repair, that will be out of Lake Havasu campus. And then for the, they'll be getting equipment and some training out of the advanced manufacturing training center here in Kingman.
Yeah, thank you.
Other discussion or comments from the board? Otherwise, any? Supervisor Gould, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Ersanbok, I'm always puzzled why we want to put people into low wage jobs. Some, a lot of those jobs are, are good wage jobs, but some of them, food service and tourism are not notoriously high paying jobs. So I'm curious why we would want to spend taxpayer dollars to train people for a job that doesn't pay a living wage.
The purpose is to get them into the position, whether it's a medical assistant or whatever, to get them in that position and then encourage them to move up. You've got to start somewhere and we have a lot of people within our county as well as the five counties that are staying here at the bottom level because they don't have the training that they need. So the food service program is going to be more like food management. It's not going to be just go get a food handler's permit. There, it's going to be positions.
We already tell people how to do that.
Pardon me?
We already tell people how to do that. We haven't even have a classroom to tell.
We do, we do. That's not what this is for.
Okay. And we're going to need, with the mass deportations, we're going to need additional construction workers. So this is probably a good plan. Thank you, Director.
Are there any videos that are going to be produced with this money?
There's not videos with this money. It's going to be produced.
Any other questions?
I'll go ahead and move for approval of item 53 as read.
Thank you, you've heard that motion. I believe we have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you, thank you, Director. Item number 54, discussion of possible action, approve the attached funding agreements for the opioid grant settlement recipients across all Board of Supervisor districts for the fiscal year 26 grant cycle.
Motion to approve.
Hey, we've heard that motion. Do I have a second? Any additional discussion? Are you none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it. Item number 55, discussion of possible actions, set a public hearing for, to consider the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance 2025-02, an ordinance regulating the residency of certain registered sex offenders for August 18th, 2025 during the August 18th meeting for the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. We have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Armin Stain. Stain?
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for letting me speak. First, we have from the Sheriff's Office. There is about 24 sex offenders living within one mile of my residence. I think it's getting pretty out of hand with letting from every state in the union, sex offenders move into Mojave County. Second of all, with, I believe within less than a quarter mile of a school, there is two sex offenders living. That's a no-go. Third of all, with, this, this is from Camp Mojave, this is where the bus stops on Camp Mojave and Cabaret Road, there's a bus stop for the school bus. There's two sex offenders living right there within 100 feet vicinity, the way it looks. And this is from the school district on Valencia and 95. South of Valencia, they have two sex or three sex offenders living there, close enough to the school, but it's unacceptable. So I really would appreciate if we quit taking all those sex offenders from other states. We have enough of our own problems here. We had a burglary a couple of months ago on a corner of Cabaret Road and Camp Mojave. And as far as I know, it's not solved yet. We get more and more criminals coming here. We need to stop the influx of criminals and sex offenders. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Direct, excuse me, Attorney Davis, could you give a brief overview of this, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So this, Supervisors, this ordinance carries on from the jurisdiction of ARS 1327, or sex, excuse me, 133727, which sets the residency requirements for convicted sex offenders. It expands the, who, it expands the class from just level three to include level two as well. Level, I believe the levels, the higher the level, the higher the offense. So level threes right now are required to be at 1,000 feet. This expands it to level two. We can't push it past 1,000 feet because a, the section, paragraph, or paragraph D of 3727 preempts local jurisdictions from expanding it greater than 1,000 feet as a matter of statewide concern. But this is rather straightforward, but this increases a moderate level and high risk level 1,000 feet. If they already reside there as a matter of constitutional concern, they can't be forced to move. But if they did move, that they have to move within the constraints.
Thank you for that. I'd open it up to the board for either discussion or a motion. Supervisor Martin?
Attorney Davis, can we stop people from moving into Mojave County? I don't think we can, can we?
No.
So, I mean, I emphasize what he's saying, but I, I don't think there's any way you can, you can regulate somebody if he's a convicted sex offender from North Carolina, he wants to move Mojave Valley, we can't do anything about it as long as he signs up and does that kind of stuff, right?
There may be controls, I am not versed in the criminal statutes, but there may be some controls where they have to inform the court that they're moving, or they have to inform someone they're moving. That's outside of my realm of expertise, but as far as just, someone can move here, commit a crime that it puts someone a sex offender registry that they had not previously committed and be a registered sex offender in Mojave County because they violated Arizona law and they moved here free of any charge and they committed it here, so. Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Supervisor Gould? Mr. Chairman, thank you. Attorney Davis, so is this as far as we can push it under state statute?
As far as the distance is correct.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Thank you for that. Item number 56, discussion of possible action, remove data centers from the list of business attraction goals for the Economic Development Department due to excessive use of water and electricity. We have four people signed up to speak. Would you like to address it first or have them speak first?
I'll just, I'll open it up. I think we've given Tammy too broad of a, of a orders. I think she, we need to narrow her down on things that she can actually work on and has success on. It came to my attention, the enormous use of water and electricity for data centers. Everybody's all excited for data centers, use a phenomenal amount of water. Some of the, looking at some articles, they were using enough water for 6,000 homes. I got a call from Tyler Carlson with MEC. He had gotten a phone call. Somebody was interested in a data center inside their service area. The amount of electricity that they needed was more than the peak load of MEC. So that's more electric than they can generate. These things need a phenomenal amount of water and a phenomenal amount of electricity. Even if you get away from water cooling, air cooling is about five times more inefficient than water cooling them, you're, you're still going to, still use that enormous amount of electricity. They should put these things in places that the resources are there. On the news, I heard about Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania's in the Rust Belt. Pennsylvania has electricity, they have water, they have natural gas. Ideal place for these kind of things, put them there. We can't, we don't have the water to run these things, so we shouldn't waste our time having Tammy go court, court these people and try to get them to move to our county. They need to be locating someplace where the resources exist. Thank you, members. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. We'll get through, we've got four speakers. First is Martin Mesmer.
Martin Mesmer, Kingman, Chairman, Supervisors, I just wanted to add some color. I'm neither for nor against, I just wanted to add some color that may help you find a win-win. It is true that these data centers are consuming a lot of water, but it's also true that in the last two years, Microsoft and Google have opened data centers near Phoenix that don't consume water or a lot less. The way they do it is that you, it's my background, on the GPUs on these chips, the cooling grid can be encapsulated with a liquid, a dielectric liquid, that means it's not electrically conductive. And then it's a closed loop, so you cool these, these semiconductors inside the building in a closed loop cooling system. And the water or the liquid doesn't evaporate, it's non-toxic and it's biodegradable. So the solution is there. So you could actually have data centers here, get the tax benefits and not have the water used. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Esposito? Craig Sutton, you're on deck.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito. I approve of taking this off of the list of businesses, not just because of the potential for excessive water use or excessive electricity drains, but also because data centers don't bring a lot of jobs. I mean, the construction end of it, sure, but once the, and you know as well as I do that large corporations and things, they bring in their own crews, they're not hiring a local contractor, unless maybe it's my son-in-law. But regardless, once the data center is built, there are very few employees required to run the thing. So I think that our focus for economic development needs to be on things that will actually bring jobs into the county and this just isn't one of them. So I support taking this off the list of priorities. I do think it is a waste of time to try and court this type of business and bring it here. You know, there's, there's so many other things that we could do that are probably more aligned with Mojave County than this. So hopefully you will all vote in favor of doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Sutton? Steve Robinson, you're on deck.
Craig Sutton, 4012 South Rainbow. As my partner Martin mentioned, potential for data centers is a long-term benefit for Mojave County. Industrial buildings are a positive, data centers are just a step above industrial buildings. Industrial buildings would be needed for suppliers and people working on the building. One of the things that really should be looked at is the increase of the workforce. There's a huge shortage of electricians around the United States. Electricians are one of the primary jobs that would be used in building data centers. And one of the things that can be done is an apprenticeship program. And one of the things that can be done is an apprenticeship program associated with your local colleges. I looked it up, the Mojave Community College and the N A U Extension Campus are two of the things that can be done. There's also other jobs associated with it as far as concrete plumbers and bringing people to the county, eliminating some of the need for additional training, because those types of programs will actually pay for a lot of the training of their own employees. Um, one of the things that's needed for data centers is fiber lines and gas distribution lines. Those are two of the things that you do have going up and down Interstate Forty, both sides of the freeway. We'd be taking advantage of infrastructure that you already have. And any project that we would work on would be of help for the area and the location, depending on where you, um, put it, would be on the other side of the California border. So companies would want to relocate here because you're not in California. That is a huge positive. As Martin mens, mentioned, the liquid immersion is something that is new technology, so you'd be bringing cutting-edge technology into your county. Speed a project can be built is key. We are competing for a race against China, the next war. We won't be fought with, uh, tanks and guns. It'll be a cyber war. United States needs to build, uh, data centers. They need to build things where we have utmost protection. It's something that President Trump had mentioned, one of the first things that he came into office, is we're in a data war. This would be helping resolve some of that. And this is not a case of the county spending money. It's just, um, supplemental government policy allowing development of data centers to happen. Even in the state of Arizona, other rural counties are competing for data center, La Paz and Pinol County, and also the difficulties that Mojave County faces coming up with a comprehensive plan to attract businesses and provide jobs. Tax revenue would be a huge benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephen Robinson.
Supervisor Gould complained about a lack of high-paying jobs. This would provide a number of high-paying jobs. Griffith Energy is underutilized. It runs on natural gas. There's an abundant supply of natural gas in our country, so we could easily develop enough electricity to run data centers. Mr. Gould, you mentioned that there's, uh, six thousand homes would be the equivalent of six thousand homes to, uh, run a data center. Sacramento Valley Aquifer has twenty-eight point four million acre feet, enough for over one point two million homes. So if we take and build ten of those data centers in our area and provide high-paying jobs, we've used less than five percent of the available water in the Sacramento Valley Aquifer alone. So just looking at the numbers being, doing it, oh my God, we can't use too much water. We have so much water that we are not using. And I haven't even talked about the, uh, Big Sandy River. There is so much water in, around WikiUp. We could bid, bid, build ten centers there alone. So I think it's short-sighted to every little development possibility. We say, oh, no, there's a reason to oppose it. I think there's reasons to support something like this and build up our energy needs, you know, and build up more jobs in the country, in our, in our county. And again, like I said, just in the Sacramento Valley Aquifer, there is enough water, according to the USGS report, for one point two million homes or dwelling units. So we do not have a water shortage, at least in Sacramento Valley Aquifer. And we have plenty of land, both in Yucca, which is part of your area, Supervisor Gould, and enough opportunities along the forty to build that. So I encourage you not to approve this. It, it really is penny-wise and pound-fullish. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Gould, I read, I read the language of your, of your item and, and you're not asking for a moratorium on data centers. You're asking that it be taken off of the list of targeted industries.
Right. It, it's not a, it's not a moratorium on data centers. It's just refocusing Tam, one less thing for Tammy to, to have to be unfocused upon. It just lets her narrow her focus on things that are actually doable here. Um, that gas line, all that gas in the, in the gas pipelines allocated, you can't get any of that gas. That, we don't have the utilities to run the thing. It's a pie in the sky thing for realtors to tell their clients, um, why they should buy a piece of property.
Yeah, I really read your item and I, I said first, it's not a moratorium. So you could, if you still really, really want to try to push a data center here, then, you know, that project have to come through this board one way or another anyways. Um, but as far as targeted industries and what we're paying our Economic Development Director to do, why are we paying her to go out and push a square peg through a round hole? I mean, I mean, we don't have any, I don't think we have any data centers here right now that I'm aware of, you, you know, significant ones. Um, I've heard maybe up in White Hills, there might be, uh, some interest from, um, that large, large development up there with this airport and all that stuff, but, um, Supervisor Barelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I think we shouldn't be tying our hands or cutting off our nose despite our face on this. There is technology that's coming online, uh, through the guidance and leadership of the Trump Administration, through EPA and Department of Energy, that, uh, those small nuclear power plants, and some power plants are, you know, generated natural gas, um, and they use less water than a house. There's new technology that's coming online. I think if we should narrow her scope or broaden the scope to say, hey, you need to have these, these three criteria here that's water, uh, friendly, um, and, uh, uh, and alternative power source to be able to do that. So if you've got that package together, I think it would broaden our, uh, uh, opportunities for Tammy to explore. And, uh, my opinion, there's new technology coming online, you know, I reached out to a few people on this type of issue, and I said, even the gas-powered plants, uh, these new type of technology, it uses a household full of water a day.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Martin.
Yes, I agree with that. Uh, you know, we've heard from people that are dealing with that about this new technology. I mean, I, I agree, I agree with the old technology. They use a lot of water and stuff, but we got people here that deal with that and they're talking about new technology, evolving technology. So if it's there, I mean, we would have the ability to say, if it was one of the old technology, uh, proposal, say no. But if it's one of the new ones where they use just a handful or no less than a house, why not? I mean, and any jobs beats no job, in my opinion. So I would say, hey, go for it. If you can, but she, I think she'd understand, don't be bringing in a, a company that's going to use a million gallons of water. She, I think she could get the direction from us, what we, what we'd be looking for. And if there's that technology out there and those companies out there, let them go to White Hill. They got more water and they got land up there, so bring it on.
Supervisor Barelli?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to get a response from Tammy and also the fact that if we got something like this, some nuclear plant or whatever, however that generation, any that power that's not used can go back to the grid.
Craig Ursonbach.
Thank you for calling me up, Chairman and Supervisor Barelli. So one of the things that I try and work with when I, I talk to people that are interested in coming with data centers is the fact that they need to generate their own power. And I'm not saying it's solar or wind or natural gas. I'm saying they need to be very conservative. One of the things that we're looking at, excuse me, is small, small modular reactors because they don't need all of that. It's a small little item right there in the property. I'm not small, but it's, it's not taking up acres and acres of land and it does produce jobs. So you've got a data center, they're bringing in their own power company, meaning, and power plant, which means you're going to have the jobs and you're going to have the data center there, plus you're going to have the property tax. High-paying jobs for all of them. President Trump, just two or three weeks ago at his cabinet meeting, just said that that's exactly his focus. Data centers will now provide their own power. There's no power otherwise. And we don't want to take away the power that we already have here. We want to add to what we have. Um, I've lost one company recently. They needed thirty megawatt, thirty megawatts of power, and the most that we could give them for the next five years was ten. They couldn't wait ten, five years for, for more power to come online. And so we lost them. They went somewhere else, and that was two hundred jobs. So we need to start looking differently. What can we do to help support the businesses that are coming in the future? Our local businesses that are wanting to expand and don't have that power. This might be another avenue to act, actually support that, the power that we need as well as bringing more, more jobs.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Letman, thank you.
I think Supervisor Gould's proposal is to reduce the list of what we want to go after. It's based on current technology. I think the request, the proposal is reasonable. Um, I'm sure if new technology comes along where data centers use a lot less water and make their own electricity and self-powered, and if somebody at Entrada up in White Hills would like to come by and propose that, I'm sure we would probably vote to approve it. I certainly would, but I think this request is reasonable based on current technology.
The, the technology is out there for, it's, it's already there. Current technology is out there to save water and save power.
Director Ursonbach, the, the targeted industries that you're actively, actively out there, uh, pursuing for attraction projects right now, what are, what are the targeted industries?
Healthcare, which I can do very small, uh, very limited. Construction, again, very limited, and manufacturing, other than data centers.
You didn't mention tourism.
That wasn't part of it. It was manufacturing and transportation.
Manufacturing, transportation.
Tourism was not part of your list.
Warehousing, logistics?
That's all in the, that's all in the tourism, uh, manufacturing and transportation. That logistics is with that. But tourism was not part of that list.
Okay. Um, the way I read Supervisor Gould's, you know, action item as a staff of two is, is just to try to limit, um, we don't have unlimited time, we don't have unlimited resources, and so to try to limit, um, chasing after attraction projects where we would have the greatest chance of success. Um, I don't think it, 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 there's not a moratorium with this item on data centers. If you want to have a data center, you can still propose a data center. Um, I would have a question for Director Holtry to see what the zoning, what, what zoning is required for, for da, for data centers. Are they just industrial zones only? I would assume so, or heavy manufacturing?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe we have data centers in our zoning ordinance right now, so it'd be whatever we deemed the most like use, which I believe would fall under the heavy manufacturing, like you mentioned.
Under the code right now, could they be placed anywhere?
No, so it would have to be in the heavy manufacturing.
Okay, okay. Yeah, no, I, I see it as reasonable, too. I do. I don't think it's precluding them from coming here if they actually really want to come here. I'd entertain a motion or more discussion. Supervisor Barelli?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I come from the, the mindset of where would we be if we didn't think outside the box? You know, if you don't think outside the box, the cat's going to bury you. So, uh, we need to be innovative. We need to start thinking of the future, and I think a narrow, uh, director's scope would be a disservice to looking, to try to think outside that box, try, try to be a problem solver and, and to seek a, a solution, uh, for our needs.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
We should remember that the reason that anybody has any interest in putting a data center here is cheap land. That, that's the real reason why they would want to locate it here. That it, the fact you don't have access to water, you don't have access to electric is going to be a negative for the area. Um, but the reason that they're coming here is cheap land. It's the same reason that the solar developers are coming here, cheap land. So it, they're not going to go someplace that they hit, don't have electricity and they don't have water. So what this does is just narrows Tammy's focus. But, you know, I enjoyed the Jetsons when I was a kid. The Jetsons had nuclear reactors right there in their kitchen, and they also flew around in their little spaceships, and they didn't need roads either. But we're not here, folks. I try to live in the real world and at least look out maybe fifteen, twenty years. But it doesn't limit anybody from bringing one forward. It just narrows Tammy's focus on what, I want Tammy to work on stuff that we have a high likelihood of success. That's what I want. Thank you, members.
Thank you, Supervisor. I think that, uh, this goes back to the item we had on our last meeting that I placed that, um, is coming back in August. You know, maybe, uh, there's some additional guidance that each one of the board members can, can have if they want to have, uh, Director Ursonbach looking at data centers for their region, but I, I know in District One, which is a lot of public lands and, and ranchers and things like that, they're not really interested in co-locating next to a data center.
Let me make my motion and we'll see where it goes.
Motion to approve.
Motion second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I believe, you guys appear to have it? Do you have it? It's ordered, three to two. Item number fifty-seven, discussion of possible action, approve the adoption of the U.S. Resolution twenty-two five one four-two, a resolution of displeasure in the conduct, in the conduct of the Mojave County Airport Authority and forward to the M C A A Board of Directors and appropriate state legislators. Supervisor Letman.
Mr. Chairman and my fellow supervisors, we're back to, um, dealing with our friends at the Mojave County Airport Authority. I was looking back at this, and this all started at looking at some vacant land, okay, around the airport that was being unutilized and seeing if there was a way we could bring that land into more productive use, possibly back to the county for the purpose of selling it and using the proceeds off that land to pay for some of the capital improvement needs we have as a county. It then, it then got, um, a suggestion was made that I acted upon, which was the economic development generated by this airport in the Bullhead City area is critical to the development of that part of the county in and of itself. We want the Airport Authority to run a successful airport and to generate the kind of economic activity we're looking for. And we believe that warranted a seat on the Board of, a voting member on the seat of the Board of Directors for the Airport Authority. Since then, and that, those actions were done back in April, actually, as, once we get into Supervisor Barelli's item, we'll find out that we actually started asking for financials from the Airport Authority before him and I were elected to the board. Staff was already acting, asking back in September and October of last year for those financials. And these are the words that I came up with to characterize the response from the Mojave County Airport Authority Board of Directors. Arrogance, stonewalling, chaos, delay, obstruction, almost a filibuster. Okay, almost, not quite, and clearly opposition. So as I stated at the last meeting, I'm personally fed up with what's going on over there, and it's time to bring forward a little more artillery into this battle, so to speak. And so this first item I have in front of the board is a resolution of displeasure, and it's a message being sent to the M C A A Board of Directors, and hopefully, when it passes, the clerk will make sure that it is delivered personally to each of those members of the board. I'm not sure they see all the things we've been doing up here, uh, that they get a copy of it. Uh, and it tells, it tells that board that we are unhappy, we are displeased with the responses they have made to the resolutions that this board passed unanimously back in April. What were those items? We wanted a, a, a summary presentation of what's going on at the airport and their activities. We had a request for audited financials, and I'll, I'll defer on that one to Supervisor Barelli. We add, asked for a voting member to be put on that board so that we can have a say and an influence in the direction of the airport relative to the economic activity that it generates. Um, this resolution I've recommended be sent to each member of the M C A Board of Directors. Um, as a political subdivision of the state, I am now asking that the resolution be sent to the President of the Arizona State Senate, the Speaker of the House, all three members of our legislative delegation, and to all members of the Bullhead City City Council, so that they are fully aware of what we are doing up here and, and that they understand the intent of what we're trying to do. Um, I'm open for any questions. The resolution is out there. Um, it is, it states very well, uh, what our, our displeasure is, and that we want a response from this board at the M C A A. We want the presentation, we want the audited financials, we want that voting member on the board, and filib- And filibustering, opposing, the arrogance that's being leveled at us as the five members of the Board, the absolute refusal to cooperate is intolerable. It's uncalled for.
Thank you, Supervisor. I'd open it up for discussion or a motion.
I'll move to approve item 57 as read.
Second.
For that motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. I appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered, thank you. Item number 58, discussion of possible action, request the county attorney, receive testimony and evidence of alleged violations of the open meeting law by the Mojave County Airport Authority, Board of Directors, evaluate such material, and if appropriate, order request to the Arizona Attorney General. We do have one person signed up to speak. We'll get that out of the way, Jennifer Esposito.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito-Kingman. I think that anytime if the county is in possession of evidence or testimony that would indicate that there is a violation of any law, even if it's just something like open meeting law, then you actually have an obligation to turn it over to the Attorney General's office. So, go for it. Thank you.
Supervisor Letman.
Okay, so this item's actually not related to the previous requests from the Board. So during the course of attending a meeting of the MCAA Board of Directors back in April, we've had representatives from the county, I believe Director Ursenbach, two members, my two administrative assistants have also attended these meetings. Several members of the Airport Authority have come to me personally with allegations of open meeting law violations. There's an outstanding article in the Mojave Valley Daily News dated June 25th of this year that details much of that, including a quote from their Board President that he doesn't sweat the minutia of the open meeting laws. Okay? That, that's literally a quote from their Board President. So this, this, this motion actually is publicly letting that Board know that we're going to collect the data, and I believe that may already be in progress. Okay? And if appropriate, the county attorney's office can refer it over to the Attorney General of the state.
Put it up to discussion or a possible motion.
I'll move for approval of item 58 as read.
Second.
For that motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered, thank you. Item number 59, discussion, possible action, direct staff to request from the Arizona Department of Transportation and the Federal Aviation Administration copies of all FAA funding grants for the past five fiscal years, along with applications for CARES Act funding, if available, for the Mojave County Airport Authority and the Laughlin-Bullhead International Airport. Supervisor Letman.
Okay, as will, as will be detailed in, in item 60, this is a sub-issue of what's going on with the finances. So it's interesting as you go back and look at some of the data that's publicly available, and it's obvious that the Airport Authority, along with many other government agencies, including, I assume, this county, received CARES Act funding. And in April of 2022, the Airport Authority reported that they had accumulated a KITI, a fund, basically of $2.5 million, largely due to the CARES Act funding, along with the sublease payments received on the property that is owned by Mojave County and subleased to them, and they turn around and sublease it. Plus, they had revenue from their day-to-day activities, and that this fund basically had been built up. Amazingly, at that same time, they decide to pay off a $1 million loan at 2.75% interest 11 years early. So 1 million goes out the door, okay, to pay off this low-interest loan. Now, I get it, in '22, the Biden Inflationary Act, as I like to call it, really hadn't taken hold, okay? It, it did shortly thereafter, and obviously, you would have been far better off just to leave the $1 million in an interest-bearing account, even for a government agency, it would get more than 2.75%. And that would have been accretive in terms of the revenue versus the lost revenue by paying it off early. In October of '24, MCAA completed the acquisition of the fixed-based operations of Signature Aviation up at the airport for $1.42 million. The KITI is gone at this point in time, and we don't have the details between, behind the financing of that purchase. Of course, we don't have the audited financials, but my guess is that came out of their current fund, okay, for that. Again, I don't know that we don't have that, but there's another 1.42 million. So between just the payoff, the early payoff of the, of the low-interest loan, plus the purchase of this item, of this FBO, you can wave goodbye to most of the $2.5 million in the KITI that they've, they've accumulated. I personally believe that there's a nexus between the county. We are the owners of the land, we are the lessor, okay? And we're a political subdivision of the state. There's a nexus with MCAA, they lease the land from us, and there's an obvious nexus with the FAA via Arizona Department of Transportation. That is a key source of their funding. We'd just kind of like to look at the last five years. Where's the money come in from the federal grants? How was that CARES Act financing used? And by the way, I believe Attorney Davis, we should be able to see the CARES Act applications for funding from the airport.
We should be able to, yes, that should be included in any public records request or FOIA request?
I think that'll be an interesting examination to see what we find by our, our excellent finance department staff at this county. Okay, we can, I'd be happy to help take a peek at it, to see what's going on. And there may be nothing wrong, okay, at all, but I, I think it would be good to see what's going on, especially with that CARES Act finan, funding and the revenue off of our subleases, which should have been used, okay, for the, the day-to-day operation for the airport. Let's find out.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Davis.
I have one slight addition that I just thought about that may come up in the event of public records requests of such volume, including with the federal government. One addendum would be to authorize the expenditure of funds to cover the cost of recovering the records. Sometimes they charge 10 cents a paper, and then that can, you know, rack up over, over five years of finances. So that would be my addendum to this motion.
Okay, I'd move for approval of the motion as, with amended as suggested by Attorney Davis.
Second.
For that motion and second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. I appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered, thank you. Item number 60. Supervisor Borelli, I'm going to let you dive into this one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members. As the former Chair of the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, I think there's enough of a nexus here for us to reach out to the, to the Chair of that committee, to have the Auditor General get involved and audit. On one of the items on here, on page 14 of this addendum, I'd like Supervisor Letman to like expound on that. Now, keep in mind, I've also reached out to the chairman, the current Chair of J-LAC, Senator Mark Fitcham, giving, giving him a heads up on this, and he's very eager and ready to teed up, to execute if we so desire.
Question, does, does J-LAC go on the road?
No, we're going to have to go to Phoenix, unfortunately, yeah.
We, we have a beautiful city council chambers in Bullhead City that I'm sure all of J-LAC could fit up on the podium. Could the staff bring up page 14 of the background data on this item? Yes, so this is the, the famous email that we'd all heard about. It's finally going into the public record, and I thought we'd go over some components of this email. It's, it's an email from William Osborne, who is the President of MCAA, to our county manager, Sam Elters, and you notice the timestamp on it is way back on May 7th, okay? And at that point in time, I believe, Manager Elters, we had had an executive session to have the first looksee at the leases that the airport had, that we had executed with them decades ago. Mojave County Daily News, Mojave Valley Daily News picks up on this item. We put it in our agenda, they pick it up on the item and make an article on it in the newspaper. This email is response to that article. I believe I have that correct. If you would like to see an essay in arrogance, we are looking at it in this email. I can tell you this also, before we ever hit the send button on emails, there may be times we want to run an email by legal counsel. This may again be one of those cases. So in the essence of this email, the really item you want to go to, and this is well-stated in Supervisor Borelli's background material, he talks about, at the Mojave Valley Daily News, the article about the county and the airport has created a crisis for both of us. Well, I don't think it's created a crisis for the county, okay? The inference of legal action concerning the leases is about to have unintended but far-reaching consequences. Again, this is from his email to the county manager. We have a critical issue with the fuel farm and have been planning on the corrections needed. Important here, we're only recently informed that the farm failed a 2017 inspection. This information was withheld to us by the previous owner. I assume that's Signature Aviation. The tank sidewalls are approximately 25% of original thickness. We are applying for a $5 million loan. Remember, we paid 1.46 million for this. Okay, we're applying for a $5 million loan to replace them. I'm sure you know that these are not off the shelf. The process of engineering permitting, manufacturing, et cetera, will be at least six months. Okay, there's a new narrative coming out of the Airport Authority we're hearing that, well, they kind of knew that there was a problem with the fuel farm, and they always planned to replace them. That's not what I'm reading in that email. That email says pretty clearly, we were caught by surprise because why? As Supervisor Borelli's background material has noted, we probably didn't do due diligence. So we went ahead and signed a check for this purchase and found out later on that the sellers perhaps weren't honest with us in the true condition of the fuel farm because we didn't do due diligence, and we now, according to this, have a $5 million problem. Additionally, there are negotiations for airline service, major cargo opportunity, that's good, we would be in full support of that, that's a very good idea. Any suggestion of litigation, this is concerning the leases, would absolutely have a negative effect with all these efforts, but most assuredly would kill the loan and therefore the airport would be essentially closed. That's an amazing statement I would have never made without the advice of an attorney to make a statement like that. One of my favorites in this email, should the worst happen here, I assume the closing of the airport, which I don't think will be happening, Mr. Letman has been in the forefront of these efforts and will be the first one to be mentioned. Okay, so I'll take that as kind of a subtle threat against a sitting member of the Board of Supervisors. I'm not taking that one too seriously, don't worry. Clearly and unfortunately, we are entering an adversary relationship. I doubt my Board will now entertain and it goes on. So any narrative we're going to hear about, the fuel farm's not a big deal, it's not a problem, I assure you, based on that email back on May 7th, it was a problem. Hopefully Supervisor Borelli, that answers your questions.
Supervisor Brolli.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve item 60.
I'll second that.
Additional discussion? Supervisor Gould, did you have a comment?
No.
Additional discussion? Supervisor Martin, thank you.
You know what, looking at that and reading through that, this thing investigate the alleged embezzlement, that implies criminal activity for sure, and that's a pretty strong statement. When you, when you write something down and say investigate the alleged embezzlement, as a former police officer, I can tell you, boy, things go up when you read that. So that alone right there says something that, that's not right in Bullhead City, I guess, so.
Can you answer that?
Supervisor Letman, please.
I think the Airport Authority themselves has already admitted that criminal activity took place. Okay, again, that's referenced in a newspaper article in the Mojave Valley Daily News. They, they would acknowledge that they're missing over $100,000 of, depending on the interpretation, overspending, little spending out of control, credit card, we're not sure what all it is, but they filed an insurance claim and got paid for it, so not a big deal at the moment, okay? And hopefully the Auditor General would like to take a look at that and maybe recommend some better controls over how they spend their money. But I, I believe the Airport Authority would concur that some criminal activity took place.
Supervisor Martin.
So you're saying that they, they've admitted to criminal embezzlement?
They've admitted that they are missing over $100,000, yes.
Currently.
Yeah.
That's not what they made the insurance claim.
It actually happened in back 20, 2024.
Supervisor Borelli.
And is, and to that point, the Auditor General will be able to identify if anything like that occurred. If it is criminal, then it'll obviously be referred.
It's alleged.
Well, I know that I've seen emails similar to the ones that you've shared, and I think those emails have been shared by the full, the full Board, and I've seen statements in those emails from people from MCAA where they were, a prior person was guestimating finances and things like this, and, and nobody else was looking at the books. I believe I read that right.
I, I, thank you for bringing that up. I had completely forgotten. We have another set of emails that have been sent to Mr. Elters, okay, recently, and I believe this item was brought up. You're correct, Chairman Lingenfelter, that there's a lot going on financially at the Board, and unless you're an aviation expert, according to one of them I read, we'd have a difficult time understanding their finances because we're not versed in aviation. Yes. I, I, no embezzlement or possible criminal activity could be so aviation-specific, but I think we all understand what it is.
Additional discussion or I entertain a motion? Do we have a motion on the floor?
Man.
We do.
Okay, in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I appear to have it, do you have it? So ordered, thank you, Board. Call to the public, we'll move into call to the public. We did 61 at the, at the get-go there. Yeah, Diana Francis.
Welcome. Supervisors, I appreciate the time.
You can speak into the mic, thank you very, very much, appreciate it.
Diana Francis, and I live in Golden Shores. I bought my land in 1967 in the middle of nowhere, and that's where I want it to be. I'm there. Things that didn't apply now apply, building this, that, or the other. I have building permits on what I've got on my property. Sheds didn't require it. I've had people come against me because I don't support the school, I never did. And everybody has a choice, you don't have to support it, it's your choice, doesn't keep them from building it, but I've had people come against me, I've had legal action, I've had people drop trailers on my property, Mojave County Sheriff wouldn't do anything about it, but ERACE did. I won on that one, they had to pay me restitution, not a lot, little bit, at $100 a month for almost two years. I've had problems with people terrorizing me, both in Word and on Facebook, and now I've had issues with planning and zoning because of a lot of this, and I tried to clean up and do what they want. I had the trailer removed that was dumped on my property almost immediately. I spoke to Scott earlier, he said he thinks I'm off my bad list, off the bad list for both my properties, but I've never gotten a letter. I need a letter. Then moving forward, I need to know who these people are complaining about me, because if I have a restraining order on them, I have another option. And then I'd like to plead with this Board to please entertain the idea of at some point somebody be grandfathered in, you know? That's a long time from 1967 to now, for have people going after you. If you moved in the area where I'm at and you don't like what I've done, why would you move there and then want to change me? That's really so wrong. It takes away my right to enjoy my property that I've paid for and paid taxes on, and it's, it's been ongoing, and I've already tried to speak to Ron Gould, and I'm going to put a packet put a packet together with just some of, I mean, I've got files, this has been ongoing for a long time, and I'm trying to comply, I think with planning and zoning now, I have complied, but one phone call of, well, we need you to look at this, or we need, there, it opens up a whole nother case. Like, I'm too old for this, I'm 76, let me enjoy the end of my life. I've tried to comply, I think I have complied, and I, I want the letter from them saying, yes, I've complied, but the next complaint that comes in, it doesn't matter what it is, at some point, please, let somebody be grand, because they're saying, no one can be grandfathered in, but at some point, please look at that. I appreciate the time.
Thank you ma'am. Jennifer Esposito. Armin Strange, you're on deck. Armin.
Thank you, Jennifer Esposito. I would like to point out to the public that the Airport Authority letter, threatening letter, was featured in the MojaveFreePress.com in the June 15th issue, and you can read all about it. But let's talk about Golden Valley, shall we? I'm glad to see a presentation on the GVID situation, because three of you were not here during the last two rate increases, but I own a little less than five acres in the GVID, and I have followed every rate increase, every hookup thing. When I bought that property, it was reasonable and affordable to hook up, it isn't now. But we do have an issue with the water allocations, because there, as you found out, 402 left, and any developers gobbling all of those up would mean that any property owner such as myself, who some time down the road wanted to subdivide, the person buying that other part of the property would have to buy a water allocation, and it would deprive the current and existing residents from being able to offer to a buyer the ability to hook up to the system. So that's something you guys need to look at going forward, all right? Now, the other problem that we have is the general plan subcommittee. So thank you for acknowledging that open meeting law violations are an issue. It appears that the subcommittee has also violated open meeting laws, and complaints have been fired, filed with the attorney here in Mojave County, as well as with the Ombudsman's Attorney General's Office. Apparently, and, and again, three of you were not here when this subcommittee was created. I'm not even sure the board gave the authority to create a subcommittee, but basically, giving planning and zoning the option to appoint themselves to a subcommittee to make a recommendation to themselves was problematic to begin with, and, and I'm not sure what legal counsel told them, if you just don't put it on the agenda to take any action and you never take a vote, you can instruct staff and Mr. Holtry to do whatever he feels he should do with that plan, and, and we're good, but they're not good. The agendas were not all posted online, in the corner of the agenda, it says that, you know, when the meeting agendas were posted, by whom, and where, all of that is blank. So my recommendation to this board is, it's very likely it might have to be done completely from scratch, but I think that every one of the five of you should create a new subcommittee to fix the do-over, and put someone from your district who actually cares about what the wants of the community have, because that's why we do a general plan, not for developers and special interests, but for the community to, to guide the development that they want. And so, making a last-minute change to accommodate a developer in January, a meeting that was never even publicly announced, is hugely problematic. So you have the chance to fix it, and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Armin. Steve Robinson, you're on deck.
I'm in Chitango Fort Mojave. I would like to thank the Road Department for putting up the other speed sign, but since they graded the road, it's a racetrack again, and they graded it so good, it is ridiculous. We have ignorant people driving up and down the road, I think we need to lower the speed limit to 15 miles an hour, and have the sheriff sit there, or put the speed trailer up what is on Mountain View for a couple months. So idiots, excuse my French, but they are seriously idiots when they drive at 60 miles on a dirt road, and we need to restrict the traffic for side-by-sides. It's a residential road supposed to be, and we have side-by-sides coming from Bullhead over the hills and everything, and drive like a bunch of lunatics. I just had to renew my registration for my Kawasaki Mule, and I got an off-road sticker, I had to take the test, and it says, drive courteously. Do they? No, none of them does. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you sir. Stephen Robinson.
Stephen Robinson, Golden Valley Supervisor, Chairman. I was planning to, and I will give kudos to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their last meeting. After hearing everybody speak about Golden Valley specifically, they present reasoned arguments why there should be development allowed in Golden Valley, and I thought that was great. I was planning to spend more time on it, but after finding out that I missed the presentation about GVID allocations, I'm gonna read about that. First off, the allocation system is totally ridiculous, it was set up 35 years ago, and it was a limiting thing where they said, oh, we've gotta save water for future people that might own, that own 40 acres, or 60 acres, or 20 acres, they might want water. There hasn't been any adjustment in that provision while they've raised the rates, they've raised the regulatory expenses over that last 35 years, but they didn't change this allocation system. I spoke in November of '23 to David McKay at ADWR, he's in charge of that system, the allocation process, he said there's 2,350 acre feet, and for the county to claim there's 950 for the future, when in the world is the future, since we're 35 years past that original declaration? They got a designation in 1995, July of '95, saying, not only do you have the 1,400, you have 950 more, so they report the full 2,350 in that. So there's enough allocations for 11,000, or 10,000 more houses to be hooked up. There's 40,000, well, there's, at $6,250 per allocation on the 400 left, that raises maybe $2.5 million. If they lowered the price back down to $1,000 and said, okay, we got plenty of water, they would raise $10 million, and I guarantee you, those allocations would go in, in a lightning flash, because people want to build, they want to hook up to the system. David, GVID is 40 square miles, of which only 32 square miles can be built on, because the other eight is BLM land. That 2,350 acre feet is for, that was given in 1995. In 2006, Privata got, for their nine square miles, they got $34,000 or acre feet in two different allocate, or designations. So if they can get 34,000 acre feet for nine square miles, GVID could easily get over 100,000 acre feet designation for their 30 square, for the 40 square miles. The allocation system should be eliminated, it does not do anything but destroy the growth potential in Golden Valley, which some people would like.
Thank you sir. Board, we are adjourned. Thank you.